So I'm going to do this again for the cameras. Going to call annual town meeting to order, we do have a quorum. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being very prompt tonight. Hopefully, you will be as prompt every night. We have a quorum plus, and people got here really early, which is fantastic. So if everyone can please take their seat. So first of all, Congressman Lynch was going to be here tonight. He unfortunately had a family situation at the last minute. I just got a call on the way here. He sends his apologies, and he will come another time to address town meeting, but he really did want to be here. Second thing is it's been brought to my attention that this is the first time in Norwood's history that we have women serving as chairs of the Board of Selectment, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, along with a female town clerk and a woman moderator. So that basically means that the women will be running the show for the next few nights. We are the bosses. All the first motions for articles will all be made by women. Obviously, I'll be running the meeting or facilitating the meeting, and the town clerk and her staff will be making sure that we do everything as we properly should. So, in order to recognize this historic occasion, I'd like to ask Chairman Grow, Chair Mazzola, Chair Bodenhoffer to please come to the front podium and lead us in the pledge allegiance. Will everybody please rise? And after the pledge, if you would remain standing for a moment of prayer and silent reflection. Flag is over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, you slayed that. Ms. Homeward, you missed it. Sadly, we have a couple of empty seats since we last met for members that we've lost. One is for those of us who have been longtime town meeting members, our beloved Harold Maine, who used to sit right in the front row. And I have never seen anyone who was more excited about being at town meeting than Harold. In addition to Harold, we also lost the amazing Patty Griffin Starr. Not only a town meeting member, but did so much for our town, including serving on the Housing Authority and the Community Preservation Committee. Everyone could not feel, could help, could not help but feel Patty's positivity, and she was a friend to all. Kathy and Chris, we know she's watching you and all of us from above. May their memories be a blessing to us all. All right, before we proceed, I'd like to ask any members who have not been sworn in to please rise, and we'll have the town clerk, Mary Lou Follin, swear you in.
Do you swear you are faithfully and passionately performing the duties and comment on you as town meeting members to the best of your abilities according to the bylaws of the town and the statutes of the Commonwealth?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, I'd like to make an announcement. I prefer our town bylaws. At the end of these town meetings, we will be appointing a new Rules Committee. That would be one member from each district. Welcome volunteers. Don't make me appoint people. And please send me an email or come up and see me if you'd like to volunteer for the committee. Again, we're going to be utilizing electronic voting. Every town meeting member should have their device. And I also want to thank town meeting members for your continued feedback on this as we continue to learn more and more about using electronic voting. This time, based on your feedback, we're going to use, I'm going to be a little clearer about the time limit to vote, and I'm also going to give you a warning when there's 10 more seconds left to vote. Clickers are going to be collected, as you know, anytime you leave the auditorium. So at the end of the meeting, members of the town clerk's staff will be out there with the box. Or if you have to go out for any reason, please bring your clicker with you and hand it to one of the members of the town clerk's staff out there. Team Town Clerk is your friend, not the person sitting next to you. Please do not leave it with them. If you go out and you don't have your clicker with you, they're going to ask you to come back in and get them. The other thing I want to point out is the last vote counts on the clicker, so you can change your mind. There are three buttons: yes, no, and abstention. So what we're going to do now is we're going to test your electronic voting devices. Hopefully, everybody has your electronic voting device handy. And let me ask a question. Let's see, are the Celtics going to come back?
Yes.
Yes, if you think they are. No, if you think the Knicks are going to win. And abstention, if you have no opinion. Voting is open. 10 more seconds. All right, let's close the voting. So 139 of you believe they're going to win and come back. 24 knows, and 25 don't know. Don't know who the Celtics are. Or you believe because three of the Knicks came from Villanova and the Pope came from Villanova that we may be in trouble. All right. Everybody should be seeing their number filled in up there. And just another reminder, you can see an "OK" when you vote, but it is really hard to see. Anyone think their clicker is not working? What number are you, ma'am? Anybody else not registered? Okay, we'll get that squared away and move on. Thank you, everybody. Reminder on the seating. Town meeting members, please sit to the front of the auditorium. Any guests would sit behind the police tape back there. And then some quick reminders. The moderator is addressed. Madam Moderator, all questions go through the moderator. You should not be asking a question directly of anyone, any town official, any other member, any committee head, what have you. When you're called on to speak, when you're recognized by the moderator, and you don't speak until you've been recognized, state your name and your district. If you're not a town meeting member, you would state your name and your address. Please stand when you're recognized. If you're near the front and you can make it to this front microphone, please do so. We have two runners. Thank you, Kevin and Jeff, that are in the middle section, and they will run to you, so raise your hand. Stand when I recognize you, and please wait for a microphone. And again, a big thank you to Jeff and Kevin. As a reminder, sponsors or proponents of an article have 10 minutes to speak. If there's a group presentation cleared in advance with the moderator, you have 20 minutes. Subsequent speakers have five minutes, and everyone is allotted by vote of the body a one-time extension. There is no limit on debate. So town meeting can only decide when to stop the debate and vote through a member moving the question. The moderator does not stop debate, you all do. So if someone moves the question, that's an immediate vote. It takes a two-thirds margin to pass. And if it does, we go to vote and we cease debate. Only town meeting members can make motions and vote. And motions can only be made for business published in the warrant and only within the scope of the warrant. It's the same thing about any topic. It has to be something that's published in the warrant and within the scope of the warrant. If you have registered to speak, I'll call on you in the order that you registered. And already have some registered speakers. As a reminder, the warrants are out. You can catch me before the meeting starts or email me to register to speak. A registered speaker cannot move the question. And as a reminder, NCM is carrying this meeting live, both on-air and online, so live streaming. So please remember you are on live, meaning that we expect to have a full and open discussion on all the warrant articles, but ask that everybody respect differing viewpoints, and we treat each other with dignity, not contempt. Our friends from Unite have provided us, along with other communities and the Commonwealth, dignity index cards to help with this, which you're free to take out at the front table in the foyer. These tables also contain updated information that may have come out subsequent to other things that were sent to you. There's also some things by some groups, some of the groups in town, and there are copies of the warrant. The Yellow Sheet budget books are out there, too, if you forgot to bring them. All right. Madam Clerk, are we set on the?
Yeah.
All right, lastly, on procedures before we get to it. We have three meetings. We have the annual town meeting, which we have brought to order. We have a special town meeting, number one. And this special town meeting, which was announced for this evening, deals with fiscal matters that affect the annual town meeting. It either could be a fiscal matter in this current fiscal year or something that's going to affect the annual budget for next year. So we are going to be opening that momentarily. And then we have another special town meeting, which is set for Thursday. We will likely not be through the annual town meeting by then, but you never know. So we will have to open the special town meeting, adjourn it, and then go back to the annual town meeting on Thursday. So just, we'll go through this again on Thursday, but just for your information. Okay, so that being said, Ms. Grow, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting and open up until the completion of special town meeting number one. Do I have that motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding it? And we're going to do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. I now declare special town meeting number one in session. So before we go to the first article, I believe the FinCom has a brief presentation, which is going to give you some more detail on the pink sheet and some important fiscal matters that will help in your deliberations with special town meeting number one and the annual town meeting. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And if NCM can let me know if the sound is okay, just give me, we're good? Okay. Next slide, please. So welcome, everyone, to town meeting. The Finance Commission would like to share some information with you about Norwood's financial situation. First, we will cover some key financial metrics. Then we will discuss free cash. And finally, we will talk about the FY '26 budget and our recommendation for this town meeting. Next slide, please. This dashboard is in Section 1 of your budget book. It summarizes the things that FinCom looks at as we assess the financial well-being of Norwood. Next slide, please. With respect to reserves and stabilization fund balances, the current balances are good. They exceed our policy minimum of 5% of total operating expenses, which is shown in that thin blue line. Our general purpose stabilization is shown with the blue bars. Overized stabilization is shown in orange. You will note that that has largely been expended. Free cash is shown in yellow. We still have a very healthy balance of free cash, and we propose spending a little bit more than $10 million of free cash at this meeting. Next slide, please. This slide shows our debt service costs. That's the amount that we have to pay each year on the money that we have borrowed. Annual costs are well below the maximum established in our policies. That maximum is shown with the red line. Note that the FY '26 number, the blue bar on the right-hand side, is slightly lower than the FY '25 debt service number. That is because we did not borrow for most capital projects last year. Instead, we used free cash, and that is reducing our ongoing costs going forward. Next slide, please. This graph shows our pension and OPEB obligations. Pensions are a little bit less than 80% funded. We contribute to pensions every year. The FY '26 contribution will be more than $7 million. The percent funded is what is graphed on this graph, and that varies from year to year. Stock market fluctuations impact the amount of money in the account. And the target to get to 100% funded changes each year. Those calculations are based on the number of retirees and potential retirees and their life expectancies. We are currently 76.3% funded. 80% funding is commonly considered the threshold for long-term stability. So we're moving in the right direction. With respect to other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, things like health insurance for retirees, we are much further from full funding, but it is appropriate to focus on funding the pension before we commit more resources to OPEB. Next slide, please. This graph shows trends in revenues over the past five years. The projections for the FY '26 revenues show the property tax receipts, which is the line in blue, are projected to increase by $3.4 million. Local receipts in orange, these are things like excise tax and building permits, are budgeted to be up $1.7 million over the FY '25 budget projection, the number that we were looking at last year here at town meeting. And state aid in gray is up $1.6 million. The total projected increase in revenues is a little bit more than $6.8 million. Next slide, please. So how can we understand this $6.8 million increase in revenue? The red bar represents that increase. However, we have to remember that last year's budget was supported with free cash and override stabilization funds totaling nearly $5.2 million. So that's shown in blue, meaning we need an extra $5.2 million just to get to the amount that we budgeted to spend in FY '25. So even with a $6.8 million increase in revenues, our effective increase in revenue is really only $1.6 million. Another way of saying this is that if we wanted to balance our budget without using any free cash, our expenses could only go up by a total of $1.6 million over last year's budget. Next slide, please. This graph shows the trends in expenditures over the past four years. For the expenses in FY '26, I really want to focus on the shared costs, which are shown in yellow. These shared costs are up nearly $2.5 million. Pension contribution is up $1 million. Health insurance contribution is up roughly $2 million. Thankfully, we were able to reduce some other shared costs just a little bit, so that brings us up to $2.5 million in those nondiscretionary shared costs. So those cost increases are greater than the effective revenue increase of $1.6 million, which means that we would have to reduce all the other operating budgets to get to a balance. So let's talk about the other funds that are available. So this slide talks, next slide. Thank you. Another important piece of the puzzle is free cash. Certified free cash represents the portion of the general fund's fund balance that the state certifies each year as available for appropriation. Back in October, we talked about this quite a bit, I think, but this was certified at $29.8 million. Remember that free cash is made up of three components. Unspent free cash from the previous year, that was $4.2 million. Underspending the budget from last year, that's $4.1 million. Having 3% to 5% left over on the budget is not uncommon and reflects good practice. And finally, the most important component of free cash this past year was revenues that were higher than projections. Investment income was $7.6 million over our estimate due to high interest rates and the money from the Coakley Middle School project that has been waiting to be spent. The building permits were $11.7 million over our estimates, mostly due to the FM Global project, and ironically, also to the Norwood Hospital project. They did pay a significant building permit, even though there's no plan to open the hospital at the moment. Next slide, please. This graph shows the history of free cash since 2014. You can see that this year's number, the 2025 number, is significantly higher than anything we have seen below, before. We cannot expect to reach this level again. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our budget challenges. We've talked about the free cash policy before. Reminder that the best practice is that free cash should not be used for the operating budget. Just to make a personal finance analogy, because this might be easier to wrap our heads around, this is like using savings for your expenses. If you need to use savings to replace your broken furnace, that's fine. That's exactly why you have been saving money. But if you have to dip into your savings account every month to make your mortgage payment, that is a real problem. You need to act quickly to either reduce your expenses or find a way to get a raise or start a side hustle. The key is not to wait until your savings account is empty before you make changes. Let's look at the next slide, please. This slide shows the trend in our revenues and expenses, our recurring revenues and our recurring expenses over four years. And it also demonstrates our structural deficit. The recurring expenses are shown in red, and those are larger than our recurring revenues, which are shown in blue. And you can see that the problem gets worse each year. Next slide, please. So the ideal is to create an operating budget that does not rely on free cash. However, the increases in health insurance and pension costs are greater than our effective increase in revenues. To balance the budget, we would have to reduce the amount of our general government, school, and facilities operating budgets. And of course, just due to inflation and cost of living adjustments, keeping the same services that we had last year will cost more this coming year. Keeping all of this in mind, the townwide Budget Balancing Committee looked at the budget requests and the amount of free cash available and recommended that we use $7.45 million in free cash to support the FY '26 operating budget. This results in budgets that are smaller than the original request, but does not require large cuts in services. Next slide, please. For FY '26, this budget reflects the recommendations of the Budget Balancing Committee. All the details are included in your budget book. The shared costs that we have already discussed are shown in orange. That's 28% of our budget. The school budget in blue is $4.1 million higher than FY '25. The general government budget in gray is up $2.1 million. And facilities in yellow is up about half a million dollars. Next slide, please. With regard to free cash appropriations, you may remember that at the fall town meeting, we voted to spend $8 million on capital outlay projects, roughly 27% of the free cash that had been certified that year. That's shown in blue. Tonight, FinCom recommends using 25% of that free cash to support the FY '26 operating budget. That's shown in red. Between what we did in the fall and what we are recommending at this town meeting, we would be allocating 10.5% of our free cash to reserves and stabilization. That's shown in green. This will leave $10.5 million of free cash to roll over to next year, shown in gray. FinCom would like to see a significant portion of this money used for capital outlay projects and other one-time expenses. Last slide, please. Overall, FinCom recommends the FY '26 operating budget shown in your budget book. In addition, we recommend several free cash appropriations for one-time expenses and for reserves and stabilization shown on the pink sheets that were mailed to you. We believe it is important to maximize the positive impact of this unusual windfall of free cash. We want to be proactive and intentional with allocation of these funds. This is an unusual opportunity to transfer funds to reserves and stabilization. We would also like to set money aside for future high-cost capital projects. Finally, we would like to work with the other boards to develop a long-term solution for our budget shortfalls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. All right, let's move to article number one on the special town meeting with a motion from the FinCom.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $32,554.27 be transferred from the snow and ice contracted services line and appropriated to the snow and ice removal overtime line for FY '25 expenses.
All right, and Ms. Sullivan, you are seconding. Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion.
FinCom unanimously recommends this. To be clear, this is for the current fiscal year. This is not for going forward. This is paying what we've already had in this past winter. And it's not asking for any additional money. It's just moving money to the appropriate account.
All right, any discussion? Seeing, whoop, Mr. Orfanos in the back. Wait for a microphone, please.
Madam Moderator.
Thank you. So in Article One, at the end there, it doesn't match what's on the screen that says, "Take any other action in this matter." Are we going from the white sheet on this motion?
So, Mr. Orfanos, let me read. That's a great way for me to remind the body, and this question, I believe, was asked by you in the info session, as a matter of fact. That we vote on motions. So what happens with the warrant? The warrant will print the article. In many cases, the number may not be known yet, and the exact detail of the motion may not be known yet. We vote on motions here in town meeting, so you will always see the motion that reflects the article that's in your warrant up on the screen.
So then, the phrase here, "Take any other action on this matter," it would not be approved then if this was approved?
Correct, because we know exactly what we're doing.
It's not on the screen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Orfanos. Anyone else seeing? Ms. Sobchak, please wait for a mic.
Hi, Amy Sobchak, District Four. Does this cover all of the overtime expenses for snow and ice?
Mr. Mizuka? I think that's a yes.
Yes, I can give further explanation if you'd like.
Yes, that's a yes. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we're going to put it to a vote, and I am going to open the Ten more seconds. Let's close the voting. By 186, yes to nine, no, and two abstentions, motion carries. That takes us to Article Number Two by the FinCom. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the FinCom that the sum of 880,959 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Special Education Reserve Fund.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding that motion. Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion, and I think you might have a slide.
I have just a couple of slides on this, yes. Okay, thank you. Special education costs are both mandatory and unpredictable. Because of this, the state law allows for a special stabilization fund just for unexpected special education expenses. The rules for this fund are spelled out in state law. This fund is different from an appropriation directly to the schools because the school committee does not have full control over the use of the funds. It is also different from a regular stabilization fund. It does not require a 2/3 vote of town meeting to use the funds. The rules offer flexibility because it does not require calling town meeting into session, but it also includes additional protections because both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have to vote to allow use of this money. Next slide, please. Since Town Meeting established this fund in Norwood in May of 2021, the school committee has transferred a total of 850,000 dollars of surplus school funds to this account to save for future years. Surpluses like this can happen when additional state funding becomes available or when an expensive out-of-district placement is no longer needed. Thus far, since we established it in 2021, there has been one withdrawal of 150,000 dollars, so the current balance is 700,000 dollars. Last slide, please. FinCom has been watching the special education budget for many years. Norwood has experienced years with significant increases due to students requiring increased services and/or new students moving into the district. FinCom also remembers how state support for special education has varied over the years as the state has faced lean budget years. We are concerned that the state budget may face challenges in the next few upcoming years. We also recognize the unique opportunity available to Town Meeting this year because of the large amount of free cash. FinCom unanimously recommends an appropriation of 888,959 to the Special Education Stabilization Account. This is the amount requested by the school committee. It would mean that we are setting aside the full amount allowed by state law, and these funds will provide a cushion for the special education budget in future years. This may allow the schools to budget a little bit more closely. There's typically, good practice is to have a little bit of contingency built into the out-of-district Special Education Fund, and there would be less of a need for contingencies if there's a good, healthy amount in this budget, I mean, in this stabilization fund. If Town Meeting approves this appropriation and the pension reserve fund that we will be discussed in a later article, that will mean that a total of just 10.5% of the 29.8 million dollars in free cash this year will be put aside in stabilization and reserve funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Ms. Groh, I understand you have an amendment.
Madam Moderator, that is correct.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Correct. Moved by the Board of Selectmen to amend Article Two to recommend the lower sum of 300,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Special Education Reserve Fund.
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding. Ms. Groh on the motion, on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the consensus among the board when we looked at this item was that as we're looking for places to be conservative with free cash, particularly because the board is interested in performing some deeper analysis about how we use free cash, we felt that this was an opportunity to do so. Giving 300,000 would still bring it up to a total of 1 million, so while it's not at the 1.5, it's still getting pretty close, while still leaving the rest in free cash. And additionally, we could monitor through the year that if we felt that we did need to go to the full 800, we would still have another opportunity in the fall.
All right, thank you, Ms. Groh. All right, so procedurally, folks, what we are doing is we are debating the amendment first. So the Board of Selectmen have amended the FinCom's motion, taken it to 300,000. Again, it's reflected in your yellow sheets, so this is, you have some background on that in addition to what Ms. Groh said. So we will debate the 300,000 amendment. We vote on the amendment first. If the amendment passes, it becomes the main motion. If it fails, we go back to the original motion by the FinCom. Any discussion on the amendment? Yeah. Mr. Ferris.
Ed Ferris, Ed Ferris, District Eight. I'm not following your reasoning behind the cut. I understand keeping free cash in free cash, but I don't understand the intent behind it.
Okay, Mr. Ferris, is that a question through me that you would like the Board of Selectmen to answer?
It's the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Ms. Groh.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So when the board was looking at numbers, and we go back all the way even to 2021, which was some of our most extreme behaviors during the pandemic, we didn't find that the fund got tapped that egregiously, and so we felt we had wiggle room to do so with this than we do in other areas where we're choosing to use free cash.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Ferris?
No, thank you.
All righty. Ms. Quinn, did I see your hand up there?
Thank you, Sarah Quinn, District Two. I just encourage people to vote down this amendment. I think we're in a unique position where we have the free cash that we can spend to fund the special education override, or special education stabilization fund to the full extent possible, and we know that this budget area has been a budget buster in the past, so I don't know why we would not take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, we're going to work our way over, right there in the front row of the back section.
Court Erin Rogers, District Six, through you, Madam Moderator, to the Select Board. I still don't, building on Mr. Ferris's question, I still don't understand your reasoning. If you were to increase this amount to the unanimously recommended amount by the FinCom, which is still just 10% of the free cash allotment that we are working with, is it still not possible for you to do the analysis you want to do and fully fund the students, the stabilization fund that only benefits the students with disabilities in Norwood, since placements, conversations are happening now, and enrollments will be happening in September, months before a fall town meeting will be called, and bills for those placements will come due? Thank you.
Ms. Groh?
Yes, Ms. Groh? Madam Moderator, I'd like to bring this over to Selectman Donnelly, if that's all right.
All right, Mr. Donnelly, you're going to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bob Donnelly, District Five. To address the question, 1 million dollars would be the end result. First of all, the board certainly supports the reserve. We voted to place it on the warrant several years ago, so we definitely see the advantages of the reserve itself. In looking at the history that was displayed on the FinCom charts a few minutes ago, there has not been an area or fiscal year in which we did spend upwards of the maximum, which the current maximum, that we are allowed to be 1.5 million. So we feel that 1 million dollars is a more conservative approach to take. The reason that we are more focused on the preservation of some of the free cash is, to the point of the FinCom's presentation, is that we do need to take a longer look and a detailed look into our structural deficit, and we feel that part of that analysis should include a long-term forecast review, including projections and the preservation and production of free cash. So at this time, we feel the 1 million dollar figure is a good figure to go to, to establish this, to fund this reserve. And again, if there's opportunity in the October fall meeting to analyze this again and see that there's a trend in stabilization or sped spending, then you have the opportunity to come back and replenish that figure one more time. But for us, we feel that it is beneficial for us to be a little more conservative. 1 million dollars seems to be a figure that, based on historical use of the fund, should be able to take the school department through that period of time. And again, we'll have opportunity in the fall to take a review of that particular scenario.
Ms. Rauer, does that get you there? Because I do think the FinCom wants to respond to something that Mr. Donnelly said. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to respond to the part about going back and looking through FY '21. It is true that schools had challenging times during FY '21 due to COVID. However, there were actually quite a bit more funding available for schools during the period of COVID. There was ARPA, there was SER-1, there was SER-2. I think there might have even been an SER-3. So it's true that in the last four years, we have not needed this money, other than one time, 150,000 dollars. However, if you go back just a few years before that, there are certainly times where the schools would be coming to special town meeting in the fall for additional special education funds because of sudden increases in the special education needs.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yep, follow-up?
Court Erin Rogers, District Six, again, through you, Madam Moderator. And isn't it true that later in this special warrant, you are already spending fund, spending these funds for positions that are of critical importance to the servicing of students with disabilities, that not only do they need those services based on their IEPs, but potentially specific to the BCBA, prevents them from potentially going to an out-of-district placement that we would then be spending two or three times as much money, considering the out-of-district placements are all, they'll raise their tuition by at least 14% in this past fiscal year and are on track to do so again? So I still don't quite understand, with this one-time windfall and an opportunity to build up a real reserve for special education needs in this town, when you yourselves said that special education funds are both mandated and unpredictable, having been on the school committee many years ago when we had a 30-point percentage decrease in circuit breaker funds one year that we had to scramble to meet up, I still question the logic of the Select Board on making this reduction, and would ask, as Ms. Quinn did, for the body to not vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next moving, I'm going to move us along, Mr. Lynch, as we go along this.
Ed Lynch, District Seven. Just a couple of questions. Is there any funds remaining in any of the S's? Yes, no?
That's a no.
So did you mention the 880,900?
Mr. Lynch, can you hold the mic closer? Thank you.
So the number proposed, the 880,900, did you say that was the maximum you can contribute to this?
Correct. That, I believe, is correct, but Ms. Bodenhoffer, I'll let you answer that.
With the 700,000 dollar balance, that would bring us to the maximum that can be, that the state will allow in that amount, in that fund, based on our net school spending.
Okay, thank you. So when you see special ed separate, is that, is this a separate, then you could not spend it? Is there a formula to special ed versus all the other educate, all the other expenses and students up there?
Superintendent Luft, do you want to answer that one?
This would have to be spent towards special education costs as compared to general.
Special ed only, so that's, is what, like transportation?
It could be anything related to special ed costs, whether it be instruction, whether it be recommendations that come from the audit that you, this town meeting, approved just last year, whether it be federal funding that may or may not go away possibly in a year. It could go to a special education fund within the district.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynch. In the back, right there, Sarah?
Frank Adams, District Nine. Through you, Madam Moderator. Is the reduction based at all upon data that shows students are in out-of-district placements are soon aging out of placements, or that there are, are there students in right now in hearing with BSEA that look like they're going our way financially? Is there data that's suggesting that this 300,000 is sufficient? Also, is there any reason that money can't be put into that account and then withdrawn? I think we saw on a previous slide that money can be withdrawn from the account, so I don't understand what the difficulty is in maybe allocating it and then reversing that if it's not needed.
Ms. Groh, do you want to, you're asking for the basis of the reduction.
Madam Moderator.
I guess Mr. Mizuka would like to answer that one.
I'll start at the end of that. Technically, Town Meeting can add money to a fund and remove money for a fund. It would be a little bit complicated to do so. This is not for current existing expenses. It is a reserve fund for unforeseen expenses going forward. So sure, we could put a half a million dollars in today, take that half a million dollars out in the fall, but the point is for the fund to be there if there are unforeseen expenses at some point throughout the year or as we go into future cycles. This money will stay in that fund. If five years go by and it's not used at all, I suppose we could reduce the amount. I think the board's intention with their reduction was that the use of this has only been about 150,000 dollars in the last couple of years, so are we in a year or two-year period likely to have a million and a half dollars of unforeseen special education expenses? It's not just, hey, we have a tough budget next year, let's use this, not to say Town Meeting couldn't do that. Town Meeting ultimately controls everything, but that was the intention of the reduction, not looking at student needs necessarily, just saying, well, we've only needed to tap this to X. Do we need to go to that full amount in one year? That's not to say that we couldn't do a smaller number and reach that full amount in the fall or next spring or continue to top it up. If we're putting money into it every year and taking the whole thing out every year, we've just got a budget problem we got to solve. It's just like a savings account. It's just like a savings account for unforeseen special education costs.
All right, I'm moving along in the back, yeah.
Good morning, Carrie Barrows, District Eight. I'm a little disappointed, but, and, I'm curious. We elect school committee members, we elect FinCom, and we hire the superintendent to be the experts on these issues. And this seems to be the overwhelming recommendation of all these people who we elected and put in these positions to make this decision. So my question is, what are the qualifications of the selectmen that outweighs the qualifications of all the people we elected and hired to make these recommendations to us?
Yeah, you know, I don't think that really pertains to the motion. I think that all those, all those officials are elected. This is a difference of opinion, so, on how budget is spent, so.
The other point I just wanted to make is that because special education is federally mandated and required by law, the money there or not there, we still have to spend it as a town. And it seems to me that putting all of this money away while we have a surplus in our budget makes more sense, because oftentimes these issues come up when we don't have the money and then we are scraping and scrounging for it. And we're not leaving the free cash empty. We're actually taking, I'm assuming less than 10%, because 10% is both the pension and the school. So I would strongly encourage people to vote down the reduction.
Thank you. Mr. Shaughnessy. Wait for my mic, please.
Madam Moderator, Kevin Shaughnessy, Kevin Shaughnessy, District Six. I'm not sure if this question is for the FinCom or for the school department, but as a percentage, I don't know what the maximum was last year, but this year it's 1.5 million. What was it last year, right, and what did we fund? I can see that the board here, the Select Board wants to fund about two-thirds and the FinCom wants to fund it fully. And as, and as a second question, this might be for Jeff. Does the money that's put into these accounts, can we, is that invested in a trust fund? I know the free cash probably would be, right? So if we're putting money into these reserve funds, are they also invested?
Okay, I'm getting, Ms. Bodenhofer, do you want to take both of those questions?
Let me try. I will defer to Mr. O'Neill about the investment question. But the first part of the question was about what was the total amount that's been put in this fund? Can you repeat? I'm not sure I followed.
What was the maximum last year that could have been put in and what didn't?
So like, as a percentage, what was that number?
So town meeting has never appropriated free cash to this account.
Okay.
The, the amount is set every year by the state at 2% of our net school spending, which is a number that you can find on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It, of course, goes up a little bit each year. This year, the number, the maximum that we could have in there is a little over $1.5 million. I expect that to go up a small amount next year. The cap to go up a small amount next year. That does not mean we would need to fund it next year. The funds that are currently in that fund, as I said, they came from school committee money, that money that was appropriated to the schools. And then there were some changes, probably mostly due to COVID and also due to some changes in our student needs. And I know that during COVID, there were some out-of-district students who were opting for different placements, things like that. There were some savings that had been realized. So the schools had put a total of $850 over a couple of years into the account.
$850,000?
$850,000, yes. Thank you.
All right, all right. Mr. O'Neill, Chief Financial Officer, on the second part of the question.
Through you, Madam Moderator. Again, Jeff O'Neill, Director of Finance, Town Accountant. This is a special education reserve fund, so it is not a separate fund, as we will talk about in the upcoming articles. So any interest earned in this stays in the general fund and becomes part of our interest income through the year.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. What I'm trying to get at is, the board of selectmen, the amendment, seems to be.
Mr. Shaughnessy, would you mind standing?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It seems to be increasing the amount from four. I'm getting the impression that you're thinking that it's actually lower, lower than the request, but it's actually increasing. I'm just trying to figure out, is it increasing the percentage that's actually in there from last year? I still can't quite figure out if that's the case.
I think Ms. Bodenhofer wants to re-answer that a little.
Yes, adding, as I said, there's currently $700,000 in there. If we add 300,000, that will bring us, that will increase our amount. It will bring us to a million. It's pulling somewhere.
I can't hear you.
Is that working?
Yes.
No? That work? I can be loud. All right, so we currently have $700,000 in that account. If the amendment goes through and then the town meeting votes on the new motion, that will increase the amount in the fund by $300,000 to $1 million. However, what the FinCom is recommending is that we take this unusual opportunity with all of this free cash and go ahead and max out that account so that we are set for the next few years.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhofer. Kia. What, hold on, can we get a?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't know if this is to be directed to the school committee and the superintendent.
Oh, can you, can you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kate Geas, District Six. To me, the school, you or the superintendent, you already know who's being enrolled to the schools by September. So won't you need that additional $300,000? Because you're already going to know who's going to be in the schools in September.
Mr. Superintendent, do you want to, and can you bring the mic close to you so we can hear you?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
I wish it was that easy. We do have general enrollment ideas, but special ed is one of the most volatile cost centers there is, where students move in, move out. They could come in already placed in an out-of-district placement, for example. And so it really is a volatile cost center. And so it's, it's not a perfect science by any means.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then it's, Mr. Ferris, you already spoke, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Connolly, District Seven, through you to the Finance Committee or to the School Committee. When you remove the funds from this account, the state then reimburses you by circuit breaker for the next fiscal year, what happens to that reimbursement? Does that automatically go back to the account? Or do we have to then go to the general fund? Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Superintendent Luff, do you want to take that?
Sure, so those circuit breaker reimbursement funds that are allowable for out-of-district placements that are reimbursed in the following year, they are built into the operating budget for the next year. So you'll, in the, in the regular town meeting, annual town meeting, you'll hear about our circuit breaker funds that support many of our out-of-district placements already. As far as the funds that would come out of this account, it may not be for out-of-district placements. For example, it may be for the recommendations that we see from the audit that come in. It could be for the loss of federal funds, possibly where we have $1.3 million of federal funds coming in for IDEA, special education services as well. But the reimbursed amounts from circuit breaker do come back into the operating budget to provide for services within the schools.
Thank you. Mr. Hall. I think Mr. Hall can make it over here.
John Hall, District Six. I've been trying to think of a mathematical way to try to look at the different scenarios that are addressed in different ways or the same ways. Let's suppose that we, that the amount of money that they end up needing by the end of the year is, is 300,000 or less. That means that with the amendment, they're fine. Without the amendment, they're fine. Suppose the amount of money is 300,000 to 880,959. With their version, the original, they're fine. What will they do if the amendment passes? They'll immediately come back to town meeting and ask to have more money put into the fund. It's happened that way before, it would happen that way again. We've heard how much money there is in free cash. So the ability to do that is, I think, not really a question. Now suppose the amount of money that they wind up having to spend is over $880,959. God help us. In that instance, I think what would happen is they, regardless of whether the amendment passes or the amendment fails, they have to come back and ask for more money. So there's really only one of the three scenarios where passing the amendment or not passing the amendment makes any difference. And the difference it makes is not in the availability of funds, but the hoops you have to jump through in order to access funds which we know now are going to be available. It seems to be that the original motion wants to take an extreme scenario of unprecedentedly low probability and bargain around that. And who knows if the other parts of the town were to run into a need for extra money and they can't get the money they need because so much of it has been squirreled away for only special ed use. I think the advantage of passing the amendment is it gives more flexibility for all the different things that might happen, higher costs, lower costs, extremely higher costs, than the approach taken by the school. The original motion is basically solving the school's problem only. The amendment is one that tries to solve everybody's problems, not knowing which problems are actually going to materialize. So that's why I speak in favor of the amendment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ferris, I apologize. I think you haven't spoken on this one yet, correct?
No, I have, of course, taken on this one.
Oh, then I'm not going to call on you again. There are other people that have not yet spoken. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Douglas Cohen, District Three. This is for the school committee. What is the anticipated loss to the, to special education if the federal government does not fund it as they anticipate?
Superintendent Luff, do you want to, do you want to take that one?
I sure can. If, and this is a big if, right? Special education entitlement grants and Title I and Title II grants all equal up to about $1.9 million. Additional $226,000 in other federal competitive grants that we currently have. So that is approximately $2,114,198 of federal funds that we currently get for entitlement and competitive grants.
Is there a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am. So if we were to lose that federal funding and we would have to use this account, at the $300,000, we would have less than what we need. But at least at the 1.5, we would only need 400,000 more, roughly, 500,000 more, correct?
Mr. Luff, Superintendent Luff.
That is approximately correct. The special education IDEA funds that are, that have funds for legally required services equate to about $1.2 million. The other grant funds are for things like Title I for early intervention, for reading services that are not necessarily required. So I would say that the number of $1.2 million is for legally required services that we require.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Gina Farrar-Taylor, District Eight. Madam Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
All right, I think Mr. Connolly seconded that. The, moving the question is not debatable. It takes a two-thirds vote. Just a reminder, we'd be moving the question on this amendment. Are we ready to open the vote? All right, I'm going to open the vote. Voting is now open. And again, we're voting on the amendment by the board of selectmen. Oh, we're moving on to question, I'm sorry. Thank you. And that would, that would be the time that you could say, Mr. Hearn's shaking his head at me. I need to follow along.
Madam Moderator, I think there is confusion in the audience with what we're voting on, because a moment ago you said we're voting on the amendment. And I think.
I, we're, we're, okay. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. I will clarify, thank you. That is a good point of information. We are voting on moving the question.
Madam Moderator, point of order. We don't have point of information, remember that?
I remember that. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hearn, for the point of order. We are voting on moving the question and the voting is open. All right, the voting is open. We can't clear the board, so go ahead and vote. I'm going to make sure that we have 60 seconds from now, your last vote. So if you, you misunderstood, which my bad, what I said, what you were voting on, go ahead and vote on moving the question and record your vote. And that will be the vote that will stick because it's the last vote. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. Moving the question passes. Now we are voting on the amendment by the board of selectmen. We'll give a second here to reset. But again, that is an amendment by the board of selectmen to reduce the amount to 300,000. So 300,000 to be moved to the Special Ed Stabilization Fund. And to be transferred from free cash. All right, we're going to open the voting on the amendment. This is a majority vote. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. Whoop, all right. The amendment passes by a vote of 100 in favor, 94 against, and six abstentions. Abstentions, so first of all, there's, no, no, we're not having a point of order. It is yes versus no. The abstentions do not count. They're, they're not votes that count in the count. All right, so that means the amendment has passed. That now becomes the main motion. Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Let's get 300,000. All right, let's vote on. Let's get $300,000, all right, let's vote on the motion, which will be for $300,000 to be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the Special Education Reserve Fund. Let's open the vote. Voting is now open. Close the vote. All right, the motion passes 164 to 33 with three abstentions. That takes us to Article 3. Ms. Bodenhoffer with the motion.
Moved by the FinCom that the sum of $70,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of acquisition of school information technology equipment.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding that?
Yes.
Ms. Bodenhoffer, anything on the motion?
FinCom unanimously recommends this.
Okay, and I have one registered speaker, Mr. Brody.
Steve Brody, District 4. Was any consideration given in the purchase of this information technology equipment for the schools regarding the tariffs that will be imposed and will be affecting the cost of the proposed equipment?
All right, who would like to take that? Mr. Kidd, we have the Technology Director in the back, could we get a microphone to Mr. Kidd, please? School Technology Director.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Joe Kidd, Director of Technology, Norwood Public Schools. Yes, absolutely, so we've been looking at this for a while, we do have a little bit of money that's baked into this just in case of tariffs. We've been continually getting quotes from our vendors for this equipment based on that, and so far, we're fine, we don't have any issues.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Brody?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mizuko, you'd like to add to that?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. Just on the issue of tariffs, just for this body's edification, we've instructed the accounting department that we're not paying any invoices that contain tariff-related charges on them unless the vendor provides us with source proof that they themselves paid the invoice. Just as much difficulty as they're going on in the economy about tariffs, there are a lot of vendors starting to say, well, there's tariffs coming on our product, we're making sure we have auditable proof if they're charging us tariffs that they have themselves in fact paid those tariffs, and they're not just adding into the cost into the product in their yard and then shipping us product that, using those tariffs to pay their next bill. So we're making sure every invoice that goes through accounting, if it lists a tariff on it, we're holding it unless we have source proof that the vendor has actually incurred those tariffs themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. All right, on the motion, Ms. Dixon.
Doris Dixon, District 1. So if this number has money built into it for the tariffs, and there is no tariff, and there's extra money, is that going to be freely spent however they want, or does it go back somewhere else?
Who would like to take that one? If you don't end up spending the full $70,000, what happens to the extra money? Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We close out capital projects throughout the year, if money's appropriated for a capital project, it'll be spent within the context of that product, project. So if this comes in at $62,000 and there's $7,500 left at the end of the year or within a year or two, we close out that project and capital projects close out to free cash, or it would get re-appropriated by town meeting if we wanted to use it for another purpose.
Is that Ms. Sobchak back there?
Hi, Amy Sobchak, District 4. Just a clarification, in the yellow sheet, it looks like it's a cut and paste problem, but it says that in the second, above the capital outlay thing, the second to last paragraph, it says this article also funds approximately $30,000 to replace 25 Windows computers for the computer science program. The computers will be five years old in the media television lab at the high school, which will be eight years old. Where exactly are these 25 Windows computers, computer science? Are they in the computer science lab and not the television?
Yeah. Mr. Kidd, do you want to take that, please?
Yes, I do, Madam Moderator. Yeah, this is actually, both of these projects are computer labs here at the high school, they're part of the capital, our capital plan, that the Capital Outlay Committee and FinCom moved to use free cash for. One is our computer science lab, which is here at the high school, and the other is the television media lab, also here at the high school, both of which need to be refreshed this next year.
Okay, so it's in the computer science lab?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
The Mac, I mean, the Windows ones are going. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Francis Hopkoff, District 1. Seems like every spring we come around with the same issue of coming up with this extra money for the technology department, and the usual excuse or justification is because that equipment is in a different purchasing cycle and gets purchased in June. Is that still true?
Yeah, it is, and also, this is taking advantage of E-rate funding, so it's more beneficial funding as well. So this is, this is actually not the first time we've done it, this body has approved Chromebooks at this meeting outside of the regular capital, capital allocations that happened at the fall town meeting.
I don't have any problem with the technology, that's fine. But we know that it's coming up every June, why can't it be built into the basic budget at the beginning of the fiscal year? Why do we have to come back every spring for more money?
Who wants to take that one? Mr. Kidd?
Madam Moderator, the reason why we do certain capital projects or certain technology capital every June is because it's a varied amount every single year, depending on what the capital project is going for. So in this case, it's the two computer labs, which one is eight years old, one is going to be six years old. Once we finish those, both of those are good for at least another six years. Next year, it is going to be some network switches, which is a completely different amount of money and on a 10-year cycle. So all of this technology that we refresh on the capital side have different life cycles that make it very difficult to build into the annual budget because then our annual budget changes every single year, depending on that equipment.
So I just heard that you said that what you're going to spend next spring, you already know about. Why can't it be built into the budget?
Do I take that again, Mr. Hopkoff, can you repeat that?
So I think I just heard the sentiment say that they already know what the project's going to be for next year, and next spring will come back looking for, I think something with switches. And so the question says, if you already know that, why can't you put it in the budget?
Yeah, well, again, I think this is an explanation around capital, and typically, it is a capital expenditure, and typically, capital goes through the Capital Outlay Committee and the capital process, and is cyclical, so is not included wherever, wherever it varies, it's not included in the operating budget.
Is there other capital money spent by the school department?
Who wants to grab that one?
Madam Moderator? Can I interject?
Do you want to just address the capital piece of it, because I think we can have the school department answer their question?
Correct, I just think it's important, I think I can give an answer to Mr. Hopkoff's question, if you'll give me just a moment. The member is right, we should build this into the budget, like anything else, if it gets built into an operating budget, we don't have a couple hundred thousand dollars for town and school IT built into the recurring budget. It would be great to do that, we have a number for vehicles, we have a number for other things. We should, because a lot of this IT capital, you can call it capital, but we're going to be replacing desktops, we're going to be replacing servers, it's really similar to our rolling stock. In the last five years, we've built over a million dollars into the budget for vehicles, we should have a half a million dollars into the budget for IT, we simply don't have the money to add that in there. It could get allocated in the fall as part of capital outlay, but we would be picking a number, and then we're chasing the reimbursement rate to always make sure we're maximizing the dollars we get, so we would be saying in the fall, we think it's $200,000, maybe it comes in at 70, maybe it's 250, and we'd be coming back. So there would be value to putting more money in the budget for capital rolling stock, but it comes into competition with everything else that we treat both for capital and the operating budget.
All right, and then, Mr. Hopkoff, do you want your question answered, or are there other capital items that?
Yes, please.
And who's going to take that? Superintendent Luff or Mr. Mania?
Yes, we have items such as transportation vehicles that are in the capital as well, and then obviously some shared expenses, right, whether it's a roof project or whatnot on the buildings that we have here in town.
So the other capital expenditures are generally on a cyclical type of system, where vehicles are replaced, as Mr. Mizuko was suggesting, and some every five years, 10 years, whatever. You project ahead for that, and you know what's coming. So it seems to me that you could do the same thing with IT, and I still think it should be in the budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hopkoff. Anything else, any other discussion?
Jody Smith, District 5. Through you, Madam Moderator, and to the school department, doesn't it have something to do with the timing and ordering of the equipment in the spring so that it can be available for installation and for the students to have access to it in September?
Yeah, I think we mentioned that before, actually, I was the one who mentioned it, but Superintendent Luff, do you want to say yes to that again?
I will just say yes.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other hands raised, we're going to put this to a vote. This is $70,000 to be transferred from free cash for the purpose of acquisition of school information technology equipment. We will open the vote. This is a majority vote. Let's close the vote. The motion passes 185 to 14 with one abstention. That takes us to Article 4, and Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the FinCom that the sum of $300,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes to support one board-certified behavior analyst, BCBA, and two occupational therapists for Norwood Public Schools in FY '26.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding? Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion?
FinCom unanimously recommends this.
Okay, thank you. Anything, any discussion?
Ed Lynch, District 7. So these will be three new additional teachers for the middle school, I'm guessing?
Mr. Luff, do you, Superintendent Luff, do you want to answer that one?
These are two current positions that were in the current FY '25 budget, as well as one additional speech and language pathologist for the new middle school.
So two are already in, and one, okay, thank you. Just curious.
Anything else? See any hands? We're going to put this, look, right, right there, ma'am?
Hi, Barbara Gallo, District 6. So I'm sorry, did, how many occupational therapists are in the school system now?
Superintendent Luff, do you want to take that?
I would have to look at, I would have to look at that number, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, you want to add two more occupational therapists, but we don't know how many we have? Is that what you're saying?
So the purpose of this article is to take the current, two current related service providers that we have, and when I say related service, that could be speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, BCBAs, and other providers that provide medically related services in schools, so we can obtain revenue from Medicaid and Mass Health to be able to support those staff members. So we have two occupational therapists in here to cover two that we already have, as well as one additional speech and language pathologist that we would actually hire. So it would take two current FY '25 positions and try to bring, and pay for them so we can bring in revenue for them in the future.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other hands, I'm going to, oop, right there, sorry, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Anthony Ketchel, District 7. So is there any guarantee that we will receive reimbursement for those current two positions moving forward?
Superintendent Luff, you want to take that?
So we currently receive a certain amount of revenue from Mass Health in terms of nursing services in schools, so we directly bill for those services. We have not billed for direct services for occupational therapy, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists. So if the structures stay in place with Mass Health reimbursement, the answer is yes, it's a very solid foundation that we will receive that revenue and probably more, so yes.
So additional question, if I may, please?
Follow-up, okay.
So with the additional position now as well, is there the opportunity to receive funding for that also?
I would anticipate we receive funding for all three of these positions, plus additional positions that we have in the district now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no other hands raised, we're going to put this to a vote, and again, this is the sum of $300,000 transferred from free cash for the purpose of supporting one board-certified behavior analyst and two occupational therapists for the schools. This is going to be a majority vote, and let's open the vote. Close the vote. The motion passes 171 to 23 with one abstention. That takes us to Article 5. Ms. Bodenhoffer, you get to take a break. Ms. Gro, this is by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Board of Selectmen that the town pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 70 authorize the LEA, Local Education Authority, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the purposes of Title 4-E reimbursement for foster care transportation expenses.
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding? Ms. Gro on the motion?
On the motion, I think I'd like to, if they're able, defer to the superintendent for more background.
Okay, so we're going to phone a friend, and Superintendent Luff, I think you're going to be the friend.
Well, it's the allowance for foster care transportation reimbursement, and there's a requirement for us to get any amount of money reimbursement to have the approval of the select board and then the town meeting. So we're here to ask you to approve this article so we can actually have reimbursement in the amount of $2,800 in this case. We know it is a small amount of money, but any amount of money will assist us as a town, so. So that's...
And Mr. Mannion, do you want to add to that? And please identify yourself, because folks may not know you yet.
Hi, I'm Sean Mannion. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations for the schools. And this MOU just needs to be approved once by the town. And once it's approved, that will allow the school district to seek this reimbursement in any future year. But it does need to be approved once. We're not seeking any money. This will actually enable us to get a reimbursement.
Thank you for that extra context. Anything on this motion? Seeing none, we're going to put this one to a vote. And again, this is to authorize... That the town authorizes the local educational authority to enter a memorandum of understanding for the purpose of reimbursement for foster care transportation. Let's open the vote. Close the vote. The motion carries 189 to 4. That takes us to Article 6. Ms. Bodenhoffer, this one's by the FinCom again.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $150,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes of Human Resources and Information Technology Department's data and system implementations and integrations.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding. Thank you. Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion?
FinCom unanimously recommends this. FinCom mentioned that this is a great use of free cash. This is a one-time expense to set up some money, to contribute money, to allow us to be more efficient going forward.
Okay. And I think this is due to the consolidation that Human Resources for the town and the schools is now consolidated. This will eliminate redundant systems and will be able to integrate data amongst multiple platforms, including automating the new hire process and the school sub-module. On this motion. Ms. Dixon.
Doris Dixon, District 1. May I ask, how much of this $150,000 is for the Munis portion? Will there be an additional ongoing maintenance fee to support that particular part of Munis?
All right. Who wants to take that? Mr. Mazuka wants to take that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We have the base module. We purchased it, and when we purchased our current ERP system, the data is not built out to work for our needs. So we have to build it to make sure that all of our data can get integrated both back and forward. So we're not just talking about a new onboarding system for new employees. We've got to make sure our current 1,100 employees fill in the data... Are able to be backed into that data as well. When we're done, it'll take us about a year, but we'll actually be fairly modern where you can apply for a job. We can track all of that. When you are done applying for the job, your tax paperwork and your new hire paperwork will all get filled out. That will actually just go right into the system. That's all currently a manual process. So we own the Human Resources module. We haven't done any of the data that builds to make sure that it's totally integrated. And then there's a smaller subcomponent to the substitute module. Again, just part of modernizing our whole hiring and tracking. It should take employees from when they apply for a job, they can work for us for 20 years, and we term them out of the system, all of which now is done completely manual. But because we're also merging some of that town and school data, there's a labor-intensive process of going through it and making sure that, you know, somebody termed in the school system, they use this code, we use this code. It's all going to make sure it's matched up and gets validated.
Is there a follow-up?
Sorry, yes. But in the future, you will not be coming back to ask for constant updates for this particular part. It's included in your maintenance fees you're already paying for.
Yes, that's correct. We're trying to stick with Munis as much as possible. And even the substitute module, which is a small part, integrates with Munis. We're trying to move, to the extent practical, the most we can to our Munis system. So we've at least got one solid system where we're putting it. We looked at other options that would have been, you know, maybe they would have been cheaper, but they would have been separate systems that didn't integrate, or we'd have to build a data bridge. And then those systems change, and we're kind of SOL with having to find something else. We're trying to get it to integrate into Munis so it integrates right into our payroll and right into our offboarding system and even our reporting as well. Candidly, at the end of the year, we do EEO reporting very manually.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuka. Anything else?
Ed Lynch, District 7. So this is going to put every town employee basically in one system, so is that what you're saying? And did you...
Mr. Mazuka.
Thank you. Yes, we're all on the same system. This will create... All school and town employees will get sort of merged into the same benefit system, if you will. So everyone can digitally change their tax information, their new hire paperwork, and most importantly, when we hire someone, everyone gets hired through one portal and it gets tracked all the way through the end of that process. Currently, it's entirely manual through email, really.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, thank you. Did you say there was 1,100 town employees total, all the departments? Is that right?
Yeah, including town and school, that's about the total full-time count. And it's important to note, we have a lot of part-time staff, and then we have a lot of seasonal staff with camps and lifeguards, and we have to hire and term out of the system every single one of those people. And that's all being done manually.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. All right. Anything else? Seeing none, we're going to put it to a vote. And this is $150,000 to be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of Human Resources and Information Technology Department's data and system implementations and integrations. Voting is open. And the voting is now closed. Motion passes 186 to 11 with one abstention. That brings us to Article 7 in the Finance Commission. Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $3,700,000 is appropriated in addition to the $14,176,950 authorized under Article 8, Motion 3, at the November 13, 2023 special town meeting for the cost of designing and replacing water tanks, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $3,700,000 under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided that while the bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, the debt service shall be payable in the first instance from water rates. And further that the selectmen are authorized to apply for and accept any grants or aids for the project provided. However, that the amount of the authorized borrowing for any project shall be reduced by the amount of such grants or aid received prior to the issuance of bonds or notes hereunder. And further, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding. Thank you. Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion?
FinCom recommends approval of this motion.
All right. On this motion. And by the way, folks, this will be a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing. Mr. Arfanos.
Greg Arfanos, District 7. My feeling is we should probably wait till November for this vote and delay this vote. That would be... I'd like to make a motion to delay this vote till November so we can see where our financiers end up, where there's obviously been a lot of votes and a lot more to come up here. So I would like to make a motion to delay this vote till November.
So you're asking to actually... Are you asking to put language in that says to wait? And you're looking for...
Yes.
You're looking for to postpone this until November?
That's correct.
Is there a sec... Do you have a second for that?
I'll second.
All right. Do you want to come up here, Mr.... First of all, explain... Why don't you explain why you want to do that? And then we'll have you come up here and actually write out the motion?
Sure.
The amendment.
It's simply, there's a lot of free cash being used up, and there's a lot of uncertainties that have been stated very eloquently out here about various aspects, from federal government to local government, everything else. So I think it'd be prudent just to wait. And it's only five months, six months. It's not a lot of time. So...
Okay. Why don't you come up here? I have a feeling that Mr. Ryan may want to say something about that, since you've moved to the front on why timing is an issue. So this is on Mr. Arfanos' amendment to postpone until November.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. I would strongly advise against this for the reason, we came in November advocating for this project. We have two water tanks that one is beyond its life expectancy, and the other one is probably 12 to 14 years away. All right, so we have to do either rehab them, which is highly not advisable, because we're going to be replacing the tanks very shortly. So we went through an analysis, and town meeting voted to approve funding for the $14.1 million for new tanks with the idea they were going to the state to seek a low-interest loan through the SRF program. So that was November of '23. We made the application. We finally made the list. It's called the Intended Use Plan of the Clean Water Trust, which is under the Mass DEP. It was very competitive. We were fortunate to get that. And it's a low-interest loan of 2.4%. If we do not go through with this right now and wait till November, we'll be off that list, and we'll lose that opportunity to take advantage of that low-interest loan. In addition, we have the deadline by the end of June that if we're able to fall through and get this additional $3.7 million, we will be eligible. We will get at least a 3% loan forgiveness on the SRF because we are an environmental justice area. So it'll be a minimum of 3% loan forgiveness, and it could be as much as 9%, depending upon how many projects are fully funded by then. So I stand here and say, do not vote for this amendment, Madam Moderator, because it's a very important part of our infrastructure.
All right. Mr. Arfanos, are you going to come up to write out the motion, please? Thank you. All right. Let's... Mr. Essie. And again, this is on Mr. Arfanos' amendment. This is just on the amendment to postpone until... So you're going to pass, all right? Again, we're just discussing the amendment that's on the floor to postpone until, I'm assuming, Mr. Arfanos, you're saying, the fall town meeting by saying November? Mr. Brody.
Steve Brody, District 4. This affects our water. We need these tanks as soon as possible. The costs are only going to go up the more we delay, and the water quality could be severely affected if these tanks are not replaced as soon as possible. The money is needed now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brody. Mr. McFarland.
Peter McFarland, District 4. According to the pink sheets, this is 3.7 coming out of the borrow from water and sewer rates. Mr. Arfanos was mentioning that free cash. We're not using free cash for this.
No.
So I'm kind of confused. I would request that he actually withdraw his motion because it's not just... We're not using free cash here.
Mr. Arfanos, do you... Based on that, do you want to withdraw your motion?
No.
Okay. Saying no. All right. And Ms. Bodenhoffer, you are reconfirming. I saw you... This is for borrowing. This is not utilizing free cash. So again, on the amendment to postpone until the fall town meeting, and I just want to let... To vote on the amendment is going to be a majority. It's not going to be just... All right. Anything else on the amendment? Yes, in the back.
Carolyn Barrows, District 8. I'm just curious, budgets are not my strength. Why is it that the town would be borrowing the 3.7 million as opposed to using free cash?
Mr. Mazuka?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a water project, so water and sewer projects would come out of the water sewer fund, or they would be borrowed against the water rates, which is your water rates pay for any water and sewer projects. It's a separate enterprise fund to ensure that the water and sewer users bear the full cost of the water and sewer projects. And Madam Moderator, if I could add one more point on the SRF fund that Mr. Ryan mentioned. By getting into the state SRF fund, we don't begin paying back this loan until the project is completed. If we were to lose the SRF funding, not only would we have a higher interest rate, we would lose some cash upfront, but we begin paying right away, as opposed to delaying that until the project is done, which ultimately mitigates the impact as well.
All right. And I just want to call on Ms. Mankiewicz, who registered to speak on the original motion, to see if she wants to speak on the amendment.
Ann Mankiewicz, District 7. How much of our drinking water comes from these tanks? I thought we were on MWRA.
Do you want to explain how the system works?
Even though we're talking about timing on this, Mr. Ryan, would you mind?
Madam Moderator, yes, we get all our water from the MWRA. The MWRA system comes down Route 1, feeds some very large diameter pipes which feed the water tanks at the Highland Cemetery next to the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Question to you, Ms. Mar...
Could you identify yourselves, please, sir?
Jerry Shea, District 8. How long... How much water will these tanks supply the town? How long?
All right. Mr. Ryan, you want to take that one?
We have two water tanks. One is 4 million gallons, the other is a half million gallons, and we use about 2.6 million gallons a day.
So that's two days.
Yes, but probably close to a half of it is not usable because of pressure. So there's a lot of dead storage in there.
So that's one and a half days.
Mr. Shea.
I'm just asking. You're answering.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
Tom McClintock, District 2. It's already cost us $3.7 million by delaying it 18 months. Delaying it another five or six months is not going to make it less expensive.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Connolly.
Move the question, Madam Moderator.
Second. All right. Seconded by Mrs. Taylor. Question is moved, not debatable. It takes a two-thirds majority. We ready? Okay.
Are we moving the question?
We're moved. The question has been moved. Give us a second to get the voting set up on this. Again, we are moving... The question has been moved. Question has been moved. So that is not debatable. Two-thirds majority. If you want debate to stop on the amendment, you will approve the question, moving the question. If you want to continue the debate on the amendment... If you want to continue the debate on the amendment by Mr. Rofano's, you would vote no. Let's close the vote. Question, moving the question has been, has passed, 171 to 20 and 2. So that brings us to the amendment, which basically delays, postpones this allocation until voting at the fall special town meeting. So this is to postpone until fall special town meeting. Let's open the vote.
Jerry, is it a majority?
It's a majority, yeah. Opening and vote, and this is a majority vote on the amendment. The voting is closed. The amendment fails. That brings us back to the main motion, and that is on borrowing for the water, the additional cost of the water tanks. Anything further? Mr. Easie.
If, I'm assuming that this already went out to bid, am I correct?
Mr. Mizuko, has this gone out to bid? Yes.
Right. So basically, it's fair to say that we're $3.7 million short in order to do the project?
Correct. That's the reason for this.
Okay. So if this is approved, how soon can they, it, it gives three reasons in here for tariffs, inflation, and market uncertainty. Are we going to be able to get this off the ground, or are they going to, are you guys going to come back and ask for more money? When, when would this start, I guess is basically the question.
Mr. Ryan, do you want to take that?
It would start in July, in tariffs of not an issue, as we found out. This is an SRF project, it's Buy American only, so we don't have to worry about the tariffs, but July would be a start date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Easie. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Anthony Ketchel, District Seven. I just want to confirm, if I heard correctly, there are two water tanks, one is at the end of its lifespan, the other one potentially has another 10 to 12 years, or 14 years. So I guess my question would be, why are we replacing or servicing that second tank that's still has another 12, 14 years?
Yeah. Can you, I know you, he's sitting right there, but if you could direct your questions here.
Same question.
Okay. That was it? All right. Thank you.
Repeat the question, I'm sorry.
Why are we servicing a tank that still has 12 to 14 years life expectancy?
All right. Mr. Ryan?
We are not servicing it, we're taking, taking it down, we're taking both of them down, putting two new tanks up.
So my question would be, why are we taking down the tank that still has an expected life of another 12 to 14 years?
So we did a cost analysis, and we have to come back in 14 years to replace that tank. As you can expect, the cost would be a lot more then, and it'd be a lot more economical now to do both at the same time, rather than mobilizing two different times for this.
If I may ask one more question, Madam Moderator, what is the life expectancy of the new tanks?
Mr. Ryan?
Eighty years.
Eighty years. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Homewood? Ms. Homewood, could you just like walk, oh, he's there already, so. Sorry, Jeff.
Debbie Homewood, District Three. I just have to ask, are we recycling that, the metal from those tanks? And are we getting any money for that?
Mr. Ryan, do you, Mr. Ryan, do you want to take that? Or we, or Mr. Mizuko, are we recycling the water tanks?
It's going to the swap shop.
Is that really the question, Ms. Homewood? Probably, yeah.
Most, most of our contracts contain provisions that products be disposed of as sustainably, as reasonably possible, based on the cost. Sometimes we'll get a rebate in a project when they discard, if there's a lot of copper in a project, if possible, we'll get something back for that, but nothing significant.
All joking aside.
Is there a follow-up, Ms.?
There's a follow-up. All joking aside, we got rid of all the metal on top of the chapel, all that copper, and I'm just wondering, these things, what do they weigh? Do, are, is that in our contract that we get anything back for what we're giving out? No. Mr. Ryan shaking his head. Okay.
No. Would, thank you, Ms. Homewood. Anything else? Mr. Lynch, I saw your hand.
Ed Lynch, District Seven. So the one with about 12 years left in it, is that the five, the 500,000 gallon, or is that the, the big one?
Mr. Ryan?
It's the larger tank, the four million gallon tank.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the bigger tank has 12 years left in it, why don't we replace one for whatever nine-ish or whatever, it's half of that 18 you're looking at, and have re, for, you know, six, the money that the town meeting approved, we would have a, one new one, one good for 12 years, and then some money for, you know, moving forward that the structural deficit of the town, you know, the budget itself. You have to do two, plus borrow another 30, 3.7 mil, just a thought. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, do you want to address that?
Yeah, as I explained, it's, it's more cost-effective and efficient to do both tanks at the same time. These tanks get very expensive, so if we wait that 12 to 14 years, it's just going to be that more expensive. We, we did a, a lifecycle analysis, and actually replacing the two tanks was the most cost-effective way. We did look at rehabbing the four million and replacing the half million, and that was $6 million more over the lifecycle analysis. So this was the most cost-effective and efficient way to do this.
All right. Mr. Lynch, you all set?
Yeah, thank you. But my comment is, just a lot can happen in 12 and 14 years, that things go up and down. If you got the one, you wouldn't have this, need this loan, and you'd have an extra five mil back to the free cash.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Ms. Escal, I saw your hand, you still want to speak? Yeah.
Tony Escal, District Five. Through you, moderator, to Mr. Ryan. I can't imagine being without water for one hour, never mind one day, but I have another question about the water supply. It was my understanding, in addition to an emergency water supply, that at times when needed, that this water supply from the tanks could also be used to increase water pressure, especially to South Norwood. Is that true or not?
Mr. Ryan?
No, I mean, we're not changing the water pressures. These water tanks are set at a specific elevation to give the constant water pressure throughout town, so we wouldn't increase it in one area with this project at all. If we, if we try to play around with the elevation of the tanks, we might improve pressure in one area, but we would blow everyone's toilets out of the ground and the others. So we're not going to be playing around with any pressures.
So is the, is through you, Madam Moderator, the capacity of the new tanks, are they a little bit bigger than the current ones? Would we get two days out of this?
No, and, and that's, it's a real science to, to water tank design, and one of the issues that we have right now with the four million gallon tank is, is just too big. I mean, it made sense when it was built, built back in the 50s, but right now with water quality issues, you know, they're, they're coming to, to mind that, you know, certain disinfectants work certain ways, and that four million gallon tank is really causing us a lot of headaches each year, especially in the summer when it gets warmer out. So the disinfection gets eaten up very quickly, so, because there's a lot of dead water in there, because it's so much in there that's really not used. So we want two tanks, one and a half million gallons each, and they will be reused on a daily basis, so the water quality issues will be, will, you know, increase substantially, as well as, you know, the tanks being around for another 80 years.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Let's, Ms. Doyle?
Cheryl Doyle, District Six. Through you, Ms. Moderator, to Mr. Ryan. I could have swore back in 2023, the reason why we were replacing the tanks is because they were for emergency use, and those tanks didn't have anything to circulate the water, and they were stagnant, but they weren't used for anything else, and we were replacing them just for the emergency purposes, because we do get our water out of the quabin.
Mr. Ryan?
So we use those tanks now. That water isn't there for emergency. What probably was brought up in 2023 is, there was discussion of eliminating the tanks and just go to a pressurized system, which, which is, would be an absolute nightmare. And, you know, we talked about how other towns, you know, that's the most cost-effective, efficient way to provide services, water tanks. Between Norwood, Walpole, Westwood, Dedham, and Canton, there are 22 water tanks. So water tanks is what you, you put in your system. It provides efficient and consistent pressures throughout the town all day long. Fire flows are consistent when needed, no matter what part of town you're in, but they do provide an emergency backup if the MWRA system shuts down, because we have one pipeline coming from the MWRA. And that has broken in the past, and Norwood is not getting any water. So those water tanks do provide one-day supply in the event the MWRA system shuts down. So maybe that's what you're thinking about when it was just for emergency supplies. It's if that MWRA system shuts down, we have that as a backup for the homes and businesses and fire department to use.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Garrity?
Jimmy Garrity, District One. Mark, I got a question for you. Could we reline those tanks by any chance? Would that be easier to do, or do we have to do it?
Mr. Ryan?
So in the past, yes, usually do it every 20 years, but now we're at the stage where we're losing metal in there. All right, it's a lot of pitting going on, a lot of welding is going to be needed, foundation repairs are going to be needed, new lining inside and out, so it's just more cost-effective to replace it now. We could reline it, and we looked at that, but we're going to be back in five years, replacing one, another 12 to 14, replace the other. So this is most cost-effective way, but you do reline them every 20 years.
Yes. All right. One other question.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, sorry. On Route One, must have been what, eight years ago, that water main broke, we lost a lot of water on Route One. How long could we actually go with the MWRA two water lines that are in Massachusetts? I mean, I know it. And are there like circulator pumps around that we have in the town that would help the pressure in the pool?
So when that water main break happens, and we don't get service from the MWRA, we have about one-day supply in those water tanks. That, that's, that's the backbone of your water system, you're holding that water and distributing it evenly throughout town.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir, right back there.
Chris Griffin, District Two. I've been asked this question 100 times for 50 years, have they ever replaced the tanks? I'm 100% in favor of this. Would they ever paint a Mustang that faces the football field?
Mr. Ryan, you want to take that one?
The answer is yes, it's part of the bid.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yes, Alex DeSilva, District Nine, and I would like to move the question.
All right. Second. Ms. Taylor got her hand up quick enough to second that, so the question has been moved, not debatable. Again, moving the question means that we stop debate, it will be a two-thirds vote. Give us a second to get the voting reset. All right. And voting is open on moving the question. Let's close the voting. And I would say that is two-thirds, and then some. All right. So that takes us back to the original motion, the sum of $3,700 to be appropriated, in addition to what was previously authorized. This involves borrowing, so it would be a two-thirds again. And I don't know about you all, but I am incredibly thirsty right now, talking about water. So as soon as we can get up, all right, two-thirds vote, and the voting is now open. Voting is closed. And the motion passes, 175 to 18. That brings us to Article Eight, and the Finance Commission, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the compensated absences fund.
And Ms. Sullivan has again seconded this. Anything on the motion?
FinCom unanimously recommends this. This fund is used to pay for separation costs when employees leave employment with the town, and they need to be paid out their vacation time and things like that. So this is a fund that we use to pay for that. This counts as our reserves. The total amount that we owe if everybody were to leave, resign tomorrow, that counts as a liability for the town, so this is a reserve account that is against that liability. Based on the vote that we took earlier today, if we vote in favor of this and the pension money, the pension reserve money, then this would be a total of 8.6% of the free cash from this year would be going towards long-term. of 8.6% of the free cash from this year would be going towards long term reserves and stabilization.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. And this fund, I think, was established by a vote of town meeting in 2023, as I recall. Sounds about right. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're going to put Article Eight to a vote. This is a majority vote that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the compensated absences fund. Let's open the vote. The voting is now closed. And the motion carries 177 to 15. That brings us to Article Nine, and again, Ms. Bodenhoffer, it is a Finance Commission article.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the town establish a fund under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be known as the Capital Stabilization Fund, the purpose of which will support capital projects to replace aging infrastructure and equipment so that they do not fall into disrepair because of financial neglect.
And Ms. Sullivan again is seconding. And Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion, and I think you may have a slide also.
Yes, I do have one slide on this. You may actually recognize the same exact slide from our October town meeting. FinCom would like to set aside funds for upcoming capital projects. FinCom would like to establish a special purpose reserve fund for capital needs. This would allow us to reserve part of our current windfall in free cash for future projects such as major equipment purchases like a ladder truck, infrastructure improvements like bridge work, building maintenance and repairs like roof and window replacements that we know will soon be required. We would like to work with the other boards to establish priorities for what types of projects could be funded from this reserve fund. For now, we are just asking town meeting for a vote in favor of the general idea and approval to create the account. In the fall, we would expect to ask for money to be appropriated to the fund.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Any discussion? Yes.
Good evening. Hello? Yeah, sorry. Carolyn Barrows, District Eight. I have two questions, so follow up. First question is, at a lot of the information sessions, they discussed how we had a certain rating for getting decent interest rates on loans for the town. Is this the establishment of a stabilization fund something that would work in our favor when the town goes to apply for, say, $3.7 million loans to get us better interest rates?
All right, we'll take that one. Do we, Mr. O'Neil, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Through you, Madam Moderator. Again, any reserve, sorry, is this, is this on? Okay. Through you, Madam Moderator. Again, so any reserves that we have will go towards a positive rating with any bond rating agencies. So the answer is yes. Again, just, this is a capital stabilization fund. That's a good tool to have in our toolbox. Again, as we discussed, there's no funding request. But in the event we do fund that, yes, the rating agencies will look positively on that.
And a follow up?
Yes, please. My second question is to the Select Board. It seems that the reason we went with the lower appropriation to the school special education funding was your concern over having funds available for surprise capitalization projects. So I'm curious as to whether or not the Select Board moved or voted in regards to moving this forward? Is that, am I allowed to ask that?
Yeah. Ms. Grow, do you want to take that? And I know the Select Board did take a vote on this particular fund.
Thank, hello, nothing? Anything? Yeah, what about now?
We get, yeah, there we go.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board was not comfortable yet putting funds into it, but we were comfortable with the idea of establishing the fund itself until we can decide if or when or how much would be placed into it. We didn't feel there was any harm in having the establishment of the fund.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Let's see, I'll get back there. All right. And then Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I see that the board voted, voted three to two. So I'm a little confused. We say you're supporting the creation of it, but yet on the sheet says three to two is the vote. Can you please explain that a little further?
Ms. Grow, you want to take that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The board, three to two, when I say the board, the majority of the board supported the fund. There were some members that weren't necessarily on board with funding or establishing the fund, but the vote on it was three to two.
I see. A follow up, Madam Moderator?
Yep.
Also, as far as capital projects, I'm concerned, don't we already have line items in our general budget to account for capital projects, though? We don't know, very little.
Mr. Mizuko will take that.
Thank you. Yeah, there's some money in the base budget for vehicles as rolling stock, but we don't have a significant amount of money allocated to capital. We fund it on a pay as you go process every year at town meeting through free cash or through borrowing. The idea is, as money was available, we'd be able to put money aside for future projects.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Doris Dixon, District One. I'm not opposed to this concept, but when the money comes back out, do we still approve it? Or do the committees approve it? Does it skip town meeting when to spend it?
Ms. Bodenhoffer will take that, actually.
Any funding from stabili-
Go ahead.
Any funding from a stabilization account like this would require a vote from town meeting. In fact, I believe because it's a stabilization fund, it might require two thirds.
That's correct.
Yes. So this actually would sort of give, it would be a higher hurdle than just appropriating free cash.
Okay, great. Anyone else? I don't see anything. Anybody? Oops, sorry, Mr. Hall. I think Mr. Hall just moved to that mic.
John Hall, hello? John Hall, District Six. Like everyone else who's spoken, I like the concept. But I'm concerned by the lack of detail, lack of examples of the kinds of projects they think would be most likely to draw on these funds. There are tremendous range of capital projects. I'm not speaking for myself. I trust the people to come up with a good set of projects. I just think that the action on this might be more positive if the initial motion that we were voting on was not only to establish it, but to identify a starter set of projects and to provide the funds required for those projects as well as other funds to make it a true reserve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. I think Ms. Bodenhoffer wants to respond to that from the FinCom.
Mr. Hall raises an excellent question, and I don't disagree with him. I would like to have more of this worked out. This is something that the FinCom has been trying to get going for several months now. And we think that if perhaps a vote of town meeting will show that this is something that the town is prioritizing. In fact, the Capital Outlay Committee voted to make some changes to the town's capital outlay policy in August of 2023. FinCom, that vote was, those recommendations were then supposed to go to FinCom, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen. FinCom approved them in the same month. School committee has since approved them, but I don't believe that Board of Selectmen has yet taken a vote on that. This is something that FinCom requested that we discuss in the fall. The Board of Selectmen felt that it was premature to discuss it then. We've asked again to discuss it now. We would like the support of town meeting to indicate that you believe that this is a good idea to go forward, and then hopefully that will be an impetus to continue the conversation with all the boards about how we should use this money, but, or how we would use a fund. But that's the reason why you're not being asked to put any money in it now, is because that still has to happen, that conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. All right, any, anything else on this? Mr. Chauncey?
Kevin Chauncey, District Six. And I would be in support. The questions I would have would be similar to like how the light department works. Would there be, you know, an overall number? Like, you must have an depreciated value of capital plant, or even a depreciated value. Is that how this is going to be structured where you'd have, you know, there has to be some stuff that's 20 years it takes, or 40, or eight, we just heard 80 for the water tanks. Is that what you're envisioning, something where you'd have an all in fund, and then you'd have something that would be a percentage of the overall capital plant, and you try and fund that every year? Or would it just be for specific projects? Madam Moderator?
Yeah, I'll have Ms. Bodenhoffer for the FinCom answer that.
I don't believe that at this time there is a plan to do annual appropriations to this. This issue was raised because of the extraordinary amount of free cash that was available. And we thought it's a unique opportunity to set some money aside for things we know are coming. Back in 2017, the town engaged in a long range building study for the school buildings. At that time, the architects who were leading the study recommended that the school that needed the most work and should get the first attention was the Coakley Middle School. Thankfully, we are moving forward with that. But in addition, they raised an issue, I believe it was $70 million, in other things that were going to come up in our various schools, roof replacements, window replacements, things like that, that were going to have to be addressed sometime in the next, you know, few years so that we could keep those school buildings going for 30 to 50 years. We don't want to replace a roof before it's used up its time. But if we've got a bunch of money sitting there right now, maybe it makes sense to stick that in the bank so that when that roof does start to leak, we've got the money to replace that. We know that's coming at some point. We're not looking, we're not talking about huge new projects. We're talking about protecting the assets that we as a town have now, doing things like replacing roofs and windows so that buildings don't leak.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Is there a follow up, Mr. Chauncey, or you all said?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
All right. Anyone else? I'd seen, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Anthony Ketchel, District Seven. So I guess as it works currently now, if we were in the need for a capital expenditure, it would come out of the individual departments, say, for the school system, if a roof needed to be replaced on a building or something like that. So how does the system currently work right now without this?
I think you're looking right at her, so I think Ms. Bodenhoffer is ready to answer you.
We have a capital outlay committee, and that capital outlay committee, every year, comes up with a five year capital outlay plan. That plan is brought before town meeting, typically in the fall. And then we ask for appropriations either for free cash or for borrowing, depending on how much free cash is available and how large the project is. And town meeting votes on all of those appropriations. So this would just be an additional pot of money that town meeting each fall could pull from if needed.
Is there a follow up?
Yes, if you don't mind, please. So basically, the cash is still there. We're just calling it a different category, though, because if we didn't set up this system, per se, it would just come out of free cash then, if that's the case, or we're setting something aside with the capital overlay function, if you will.
Ms. Bodenhoffer?
Okay, thank you. So this would become a stabilization account, like our general purpose stabilization account. It would be something that would last from year to year. It wouldn't have to go back through the process of being certified as free cash. And it would give us an opportunity to address maybe some big ticket items if we don't have, if we have a year with a lower amount of free cash. The other thing that this could potentially allow us to do is to just be a little bit more intentional and proactive about how do we want to spend this unusual windfall of free cash? It's like we've, you know, gotten a giant bonus of a couple of months' salary, and now, how much are we going to put towards our long term savings? How much are we going to put towards one time things? And how much do we want to put towards, towards our day to day expenses? So we could just wait, and every time a good question comes up, then we say yes or no to that. Or we could be a little bit more proactive and say, let's put this percentage aside.
Time's up.
That seems to have, I was afraid it was a fire alarm, but I think we're good, right?
No, we're good, we're good, we're good.
So it would, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
No, I think you, I think you answered, answered.
Yeah, to that point. And I guess that if once money is allocated to the stabilization fund, it can't be used for anything else other than capital improvements.
Correct.
Correct. And it would also take, I want to remind the body that to utilize it takes a two thirds vote of town meeting to pull money out. So, you know, there, it's, it's a fund that could be utilized for, just like any other stabilization fund or reserve fund, that can be used for a specific purpose that is a savings account, if you will.
Correct. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Hearn?
David Hearn, District Four. Madam Moderator, I have a question based on the last comment that you made. The yellow sheets say that appropriations from the capital stabilization fund will require a majority vote of town meeting. I think we just heard it would require a two thirds vote. Can we get clarification on that before we vote on this?
Well, to establish a stabilization fund takes a majority vote. To put money in it takes a majority vote. To take money out would take a two thirds vote.
That's not what the yellow sheets say. So I would like to get clarification, since it might affect some people's views on how to vote on the matter.
Mr. Mizuko, or?
Madam Moderator, it's to add money to a stabilization fund is a simple majority. To take money out is a two thirds majority.
The last sentence, Madam Moderator, on page five of the yellow sheets, if you would look at that, says appropriations will require a majority vote. Is that an error, Madam Moderator, just so we can clarify it?
Yes, I could. It says appropriations from capital will require a majority. It should say appropriations to the capital stabilization fund require a majority. Works the same as our general purpose stabilization. Simple majority goes in, two thirds comes out.
So that is a typo on a yellow sheet, which is not anything we're voting on.
I understand that, but I think it guides people in the voting, and I appreciate the clarification and the correction. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Yes, sir, right back there. Jeff, you guys can raise each other.
Doug Jassit. Doug Jassit, District Seven. Celtics are up 62-51 at halftime.
I'm not going to call you out of order on that.
It seems like the creation of another stabilization fund is just getting redundant. And how many do we need? Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think, I assume that's a rhetorical question. Ms. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, District Three. I think it's a great idea. It feels a little like the CPA, which we had to fight and fight for. We're not spending it, we're just having it. So it's there. Some of these, we're not spending it. And the Community Preservation Act did the same thing. You're putting it in a little lockbox. Hate that term, use something else. But I think it's a great idea, and I would, I would, I'm supporting this. How do you say that? You say that so well. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Homewood. All right. I don't see any more hands, so we're going to put this to a vote. As a reminder, and Mr. Hearn, thank you for the call-out, this is to establish a capital stabilization fund, will only take a majority vote. To put money into it, which we are not doing at this time, would take a majority vote. And once there's money in it, and if there is an allocation to be made from it, it would require a two-thirds majority vote. But for this vote, to establish the capital stabilization fund, it is a majority vote. And let's open up the voting. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. And the motion passes 157 to 34. That brings us to Article Nine, and the Finance Commission, Ms. Bodenhopper.
I believe Article 10?
Whoop, sorry, Article 10, my bad. Thank you, Ms. Bodenhopper.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the town establish a fund under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5D, to be known as the Pension Reserve Fund, the purpose of which will provide a structured approach to managing long-term pension obligations.
And Ms. Sullivan, you're seconding. Ms. Bodenhopper on the motion.
This would be another opportunity for us to use some of our free cash to stabilize some of our expenses. It would be a reserve fund that could be used for our pension obligation. It would allow the Director of Finance and the Treasurer to move funds from this fund into our, our pension fund, as market conditions dictate. It is approved, it recommended unanimously by the FinCom. I believe it is also recommended by the Board of Selectmen. This one is different from the previous one, in that we will have, next, if this is approved, then the next motion will be to allocate funds to this reserve account.
Yes, and I believe there's a subsequent motion, a subsequent article to actually fund it. This was approved unanimously by both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am? Hold on, wait for the mic, please. Thank you. And we all, we all want you to identify yourself also.
Susan Davis, District Six. I just have a question on where all these funds, where the money's coming from.
Ms. Bodenhopper?
This would be part of the allocation of free cash. As we said before, there's $29.8 million in free cash that was certified last fall. We spent nine-ish million of it at the fall Town Meeting. With this allocation, that, and what we did at the fall, and what we did just a few minutes ago, the total amount from that $29.8 million, that would be going to long-term reserves, would be 8.6% of it. So we're taking 8.6% of our big bonus and saying, let's, let's put that aside for long-term needs.
But where is it coming from?
Free cash.
Well, hold on, hold on. All we're doing right now is, we are discussing establishing the fund. We're not talking about funding it right now. That would be the next article. So the question right now does not pertain to what we're discussing. That question would be on the funding article, which is the next one. So I will call on you first for that one. How's that?
Thank you.
This is just establishing the fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, anything, anybody else? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Madam Moderator, Kevin Shaughnessy, District Six. Just a quick question. It may possibly be for the funding part of it, but since we said, I believe it was said that we're 76% or 77%, Tony might have that number funded, would it not make sense to get to that 80% that would, you know, traditionally be, is that part of the next thing? Am I out of turn here? Is that something we were talking about?
It's really the next article.
Okay, sorry then, thank you.
All right, you'll be second. Anyone else on establishing the fund? Yes, sir? Nope, still can't hear you.
Here we go.
There we go.
Michael Jozek, District Two. Following up on Mr. Hearn's question towards the end of the last article, if this fund is created by the body, would expenditures be approved by the Town Treasurer, or by Town Meeting? And if by Town Meeting, would it be by a majority or a two-thirds vote?
Mr. O'Neill, Director of Finance, you want to take that?
Sure, through Madam Moderator. So this would be through Town Meeting, but it would be a majority vote.
Well, they can't hear you.
Through Madam Moderator.
All right, all right, thank you, Mr. Connelly.
This would be, the all expenses would come through Town Meeting, and because this is a reserve fund, it's a majority vote.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything further? I don't see anyone, so we're going to put this to a vote, and this is to establish a pension, the Pension Reserve Fund. It is a majority vote. Open the voting. Voting is now open. And the motion carries 158 to 26 with two abstentions. Takes us to Article 11. Ms. Bodenhopper?
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $1 million be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Pension Reserve Fund.
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding. Ms. Bodenhopper on the motion.
This is recommended by both the Finance Commission and by the Board of Selectmen. And if I could proactively answer a question that I believe is coming, so this, the money for this would be coming from free cash, that $29.8 million that was certified in the fall. But perhaps the question is more, where did that $29.8 million come from? Every year, we estimate how much we think we're going to bring in, in revenues for the coming year, and we estimate how much we think we're going to need to spend. And every year, we are not able to spend every last penny that has been budgeted. We can't, because we're not allowed to go over, so we never quite hit the exact budgeted amount. So whatever's left in that budget, that helps, that becomes part of free cash. And then, any revenues that were higher than we expected, that also becomes free cash. So the building permits that we thought we were going to get, like, one and a half million dollars in building permits, that's typically our number on an annual basis. But when you suddenly build a $500 million project, like FM Global, they give us a really large building permit of $7 million. So that becomes, that extra money that we weren't anticipating, that becomes free cash the following year. So what we had was after June 30th of 2025, there was between money that was left over from the previous year, money that was budgeted and we didn't spend, and the extra revenue that we got, we wound up with $29.8 million of free cash. And so this is an opportunity to put some of that aside for future years.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhopper. All right. Do you still want to speak, or did that answer your question?
I'm just, I'm just.
Hold on, wait for a mic. And also, re-identify yourself, please.
Susan Davis.
Yep, hold on.
Susan Davis, District Six. I guess it does in a way, but I guess that's why they want all these building projects, so they get money. Right? That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Super. Mr. Shaughnessy, did you want to, or did you get your question answered as well? I think you're getting waved off. Okay. You're good. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Connetti. Did I, did I screw it up again? And you're going to tell us who you are, too, when the mic, get the mic going.
I think it's on now. Okay, I'm Steve Connetti, District Four. It seems to me that all these articles that we've been talking about, or a lot of them anyways, have been nibbling away a little bit at a time at free cash. And I'm just wondering, by the time we get to the actual budget, budget articles, how much free cash is going to be left?
All right. Ms. Boden, Ms. Bodenhopper? Actually, I think you want to refer to the pink sheet, right?
That information is available in your pink sheet. If you look at the first page, I guess there's a letter, and then there's the first page of the pink sheet, it shows that after this special Town Meeting, we were anticip, the FinCom was recommending that there would be roughly $18 million left in free cash. But because the motion amendment that the Board of Selectmen made with regard to Special Education Stabilization passed, that brings us more to $18.5 million in free cash that will be available. And then, in the annual budget, we are recommending spending $7.45 million in free cash, so that will leave us with a total of a little more than $11 million in free cash that has not yet been appropriated, and would be rolled over into the free cash for next year.
Is there a follow-up? Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Thornton?
Mike Thornton, District One. Don't know if this is appropriate. It's not technically a pension question, but it's for health benefits related to retirement. And I noticed in the book that FinCom is indicating that the policy for OPEB is no longer attainable. And if that's the case, what's the plan for the future for OPEB?
I think Mr. Mizuko is probably going to take that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't know that I'd say it's no longer attainable. The delta between where we are with OPEB and where we'd like to be is so huge, that trying to address that and getting it fully funded in the pension system at the same time is not likely to be as effective as we'd like it to be. So the focus is if we can get the pension system fully funded, and there's a handful of towns in Massachusetts that do, once we're there, that will free up resources in that line to really aggressively go after OPEB funding. If we had an extra $5 million, I would say, put it in the pension fund. We could put it in OPEB, but we're, that's almost too many buckets, and that OPEB delta is huge. So we're kind of sort of just throwing drops in it, solve the pension plan first, and then, and instantly, at our 77%, we're on the higher end for cities and towns in the state. We're in a very good position. But the goal is to put our resources towards solving that. Once we have solved that problem, then we can really attack OPEB aggressively. That might be 10 or 15 years, but that's the thought process.
Follow-up, please?
Any follow-up?
So, Mr. Mizuko, when you say, solve the pension problem, is that 100% funding, or something north of 80%?
Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We would always be in a good fiscal position if we are in that 80% range. In a perfect world, that arc would be something like 120%. Once we're fully funded, our contribution drops down significantly. We're on a funding schedule, as every pension system is in the state. There are some that are fully funded at beyond 100%. Their contribution annually drops, that would save us millions of dollars a year. The idea would be, that can then really comprehensively start to address OPEB. I'd like to get us to 110% or 120% funded. We're at 76. We've been at it 80 years. I don't know if we'll get there soon, but that's the next sort of fiscal area that we should try to focus on.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmetier?
Brian, Brian Palmetier, District Eight. Since this is going for unfunded liabilities, can, can somebody just explain to me a little bit? I hope this is an easier question to answer than it is to ask, but the, how our pension system works? I'm used to pension systems where they're partially self-funded, for example, matching funds, IRAs, 401Ks. You're contributing some of your pay to it. I get the impression this is not how our pensions are, but I don't know. So if somebody could explain to me to understand why we need to put aside money for unfunded liabilities?
All right. So we're going to have Mr. Mizuko take that, because that is within the scope, Mr. Palmetier, about why we're being asked to do this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the body, I'll explain for just a moment how our pension system works in Massachusetts. Every city and town in the Commonwealth and the state itself have the same exact pension system. It's the same across all the different districts and departments and towns. There's slight variations by the, based on whether you're public safety or not public safety, but the core years of service, what you receive in a pension, are the same. This is the employer contribution. So this is our contribution as an employer to the pension fund. Employees in cities and towns in Massachusetts, as well as the state, contribute 11% of their salary to the pension system. It's also important to note that employees in Massachusetts, both municipal and state, do not pay into Social Security, and if you work for a city or town for your whole career, you will not receive Social Security. So I currently don't pay into Social Security. Conversely, the, us as an employer, we don't have that match into Social Security. Medicare, we do, that's the same across the board. But municipal employees pay 11%. There's a few folks grandfathered in who, believe it or not, started in the 70s and 80s, who pay a little bit less, but the bulk of employees, it's 11% of their salary, goes into their pension contribution. It's a 10-year minimum vesting schedule. This is the employer contribution into the pension fund.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Palmetier?
Yes. So, but that's not, that's not full-funding theirs. We're, we're, you're saying this is a state system, so, you know, I guess we're there. But just to help me understand, Madam Moderator, they're putting in 11% of their pay, how much of that funds it? And I'm assuming that, that we as the employer are funding the rest, are required to fund the rest? Or is there some state funding available, for example, for pensions, or?
Mr. Mizuko's got that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. No, it's like any pension system, the money goes into a fund, and then there's an actuarial calculation made by actuaries that determine how much you need to be in there to be able to pay out that pension fund over time. It's not necessarily an even split between employer and employer. We're not fully funded. If we were fully funded, the town's contribution wouldn't exceed what employees put in. The problem is, we're not fully funded, and most towns aren't, and that's okay. There are some towns that are 30% or 40% funded. The simple solution to pay less would be to fully fund it. Somebody come up with a 30 or 40 million, and we'll have that problem solved. So it's not exactly an even split, but it is an 11% across an employee's career on all regular earnings, and this is important to note, overtime doesn't count into your pension system in Massachusetts. So even if an employee works a lot of overtime, they don't pay a contribution on that, their pension is not based on that either.
Thank you.
What's that, Mr. Palmetier?
I, I love when, to get educated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmetier. In the back, make it easy, right? Easy for you, Jeff.
Carolyn Barrows, District Eight. I just got a little confused. We're not, this is, Madam Moderator, we're not putting money into the pension fund. This is a separate account. Is that accurate?
Yes.
We'll have Mr. O'Neill answer that.
Through Madam Moderator, yes, it's a separate account. So this, this, the goal of this is to accumulate some funds in there to potentially offset future operating budget contributions to the employment, to the pension fund. In the event the, the fund builds a significant balance, and there's a significant disruption in financial markets, we can then decide to give that to the Norwood contributory retirement system to invest. So it's twofold. It's really to accumulate some funds to offset future pension-related costs in the operating budget.
Is there a follow-up?
Yes, please. So have, I'm totally for this, first of all, I was just going to say, but I'm curious, has there been a history of needing funds to provide these? Has there been a history of needing funds to provide these things in the past?
Well, we just established the fund, so that's number one. But Ms. Bodenhoffer, I think, wants to take that for the FinCom.
When we were talking about shared costs in the operating budget, we mentioned that the pension contribution for this year, our required minimum contribution to the pension, based on the numbers that we get from the state, is $7 million that we have to put in every single year. And so, we haven't had a fund like this, so we haven't had to use a fund like, we haven't been able to use a fund like this. But it does have the possibility that if we had a problem, a year when suddenly our required minimum contribution spiked up even, you know, jumped significantly, we could use the reserve to help make that have less of an impact on the rest of the operating budget.
And I think Mr. Mizuko wants to add on to that.
Sure. Just to add on to that, we're required to be fully funded by, I think it's either 2035 or 2038. Every city and state, every city and the town is required, in the Commonwealth, rather, is required to fully fund their pension systems by a date. However, I can tell you, I think the original date when the state did this was something like 2005. And what happens is markets change, the economy changed, and everyone says, geez, we can't contribute. Can we kick it out longer? Can we kick it out longer? So I'm sure 2035 will become 2040. There are already folks looking at it. That'll become 2045. If we don't go above that minimum, it's likely we'll always be where we are. And we can live like that. But the best practice would be to try to get to a point where we can get fully funded. Then we have solved the problem comprehensively, and we can move on to whatever the next unfunded liability that actuaries will invent for us.
Follow-up?
Sorry. So even though this isn't going into the fund, it counts towards being fully funded? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Sarah. Is that Ms., right there? Yep.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Brian Gunning, District Three. I had a question I wanted to direct to the Finance Commission. And my question is, how does the transfer of monies from free cash and any other non-designated monies held by the town, how does the accounting of that affect into any future override propositions that the town may face?
All right. He's directing it to the Finance Commission. Ms. Bodenhoffer, you might also want Mr. O'Neill, if you want, but go ahead.
That would be something that would be up for discussion as we, if we were to go forward with a plan for an override. But I would expect that we would do something similar to what we did with the override that was in 2019, where there was an override pledge. And part of that override pledge was that we would expend all available revenues and sources of funds before we ask the taxpayers for additional monies.
Okay. And I just want to caution, we're not going to get into a discussion on an override, because we're talking about funding a pension reserve fund, but go ahead.
My follow-up question, Madam Moderator, is that if the money is designated from free cash to the pension fund, or any other fund, and we've talked about a few tonight, does that money no longer count against an override in the future?
Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you want to take that?
I'm not sure exactly how to answer the question of if it counts toward an override. That's a...
Yeah. Could you clarify what you mean by...
That's a question of, are we, an override is asking the town to approve collection of additional property tax revenues. So this is an adjacent question, but, adjacent issue, but not exactly the same.
And again, we're not discussing an override here. We're discussing this particular fund, funding it.
So what, my, Madam Moderator, as a follow-up, if I may, please. My question is, once you're allocating this money specifically to the pension reserve fund, accounting-wise, what is that, how does that play out into a future override as opposed to keeping that money in free money?
Okay. Do you, let me make sure, and I think I'm going to have Director of Finance, O'Neill, answer this question. Are you asking, to clarify your question, if we allocate this money to a pension reserve fund, can it not be used for any other purpose to potentially mitigate the need for funds via an override? Is that the question?
That's a fair, that's a fair summary, I suppose.
Through you, Madam Moderator. So the answer to your question is yes. These funds become restricted for the purpose that they're voted in for. And this purpose would be for the pension reserve funding.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall?
John Hall, District Six. When I spoke earlier about the Special Education Reserve Fund, I mentioned that some of the options had more flexibility than others. At this point, by my count, we have four reserve funds. We've got the Pension Reserve Fund. We've got the Capital Stabilization Fund. We've got the Compensated Absences Reserve Fund. And we have the Special Education Fund. Now imagine a world in which the budgeteers are trying to figure out what to allocate where, and they're not looking at $27 million in free cash. They're looking at a number sufficiently lower that the claimants in the different reserve funds are going to be competing with each other. At that point, it becomes important to know who gets to take the lead on proposing what the allocations would be. And I'm not sure what the plan is. It could be the FinCom. It could be the Board of Selectmen. It could be the General Manager. It could be the Treasurer. It could be the Finance Officer. I'm assuming we've got a plan of sorts, even if we haven't reached the point where they need to take this rather delicate problem and come up with a recommended solution for each of the sources or sites. But I'd be interested in the interest of transparency and fairness to know, how would this be handled, when, not if, we get to that point?
So I don't think that really pertains to the motion, but I'm going to let Ms. Bodenhoffer respond, because she seems to want to respond around a plan, overall plan.
So as for all appropriations, Town Meeting is the ultimate authority. Right. So in the end, the decisions will be made by Town Meeting. But at the Board of Selectmen's recent meeting sometime in April, they were talking about putting together a committee that would include representatives from all of those groups you just mentioned. Board of Selectmen, FinCom, School Committee, Superintendent, General Manager, Director of Finance, to come up with a recommendation that we would be bringing forward to Town Meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. All right. Anything else on the $1 million? And I see, I, thank you. In the back. That's the problem when you sit back there.
Jonathan Kane, District Six. If I may ask, through you, Madam Moderator. I understand putting money aside for a reserve, but is there a reason why the money just can't go into the pension directly? We know it's underfunded. Just curious.
Ms. Bodenhoffer?
This might give us a little bit more flexibility. As I said, the state recommends, it requires a certain minimum contribution from the town every year to the pension fund. If next year, if we were to put an extra million dollars in right now, then next year, that's not really going to have a significant impact on how much the state is going to require us to put in. But if, say, all right, this year they're requiring us to put in $7 million. If next year they say, nope, you need to put in $8.5 million. And we think, wow, where are we going to get, we struggled to get the $7 million last year. Where are we going to get the $8.5 the next year? Well, we would have a million that was already set aside that could count towards that minimum required contribution.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Follow-up? Yep.
Just curious.
Can you also hold the mic up a little? Thank you.
How big is the pension and how large is the shortfall? I know the percentages, but not the dollars.
Mr. O'Neill?
Through you, Madam Moderator. So the pension right now is about $202 million? It's got to turn on. Through you, Madam Moderator. The pension fund right now is about $202 million invested. It's about a $267, $270 million total liability. So we're looking at $65 to $67 million that needs to be funded, as Mr. Mizuko said, by 2040.
Is there a follow-up?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I don't see any more hands, so we're going to put this to a vote. Whoop. Is there a hand back there?
Thanks. Janice Singlis, District Nine. The Yellow Sheet, through you, Madam Moderator. I'm not sure the best person to answer it. The article we previously voted on talks about possibility of investing this money to potentially generate returns. I'm wondering if you could speak to that and if you think there's a financial advantage there.
I think we're going to Mr. O'Neill, the Director of Finance, again.
Again, through you, Madam Moderator. Yes. So this will allow the Treasurer to invest these funds. Our goal would be to do very safe and liquid investments on this. Like I said, the hope is to offset future contributions that are increased in the operating budget. So we will not, we will not be investing this like the pension fund. We will not be investing in equities and fixed income. This will be a money market short, safe, liquid investment.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Going to put this to a vote, and this is that the sum of $1 million be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Pension Reserve Fund, which was established in the previous article. This is a majority vote. And I'm opening the vote. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. And the motion carries 149 to 25 with two abstentions. This brings us to Article 12, Unpaid Bills, and the Finance Commission. Ms. Bodenhoffer?
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $2,141.19 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying unpaid bills for fiscal years prior to July 1, 2024.
And seconded by Ms. Sullivan. On the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer?
FinCom unanimously recommends funding this motion. The details of the requests are included in the Yellow Sheet.
So basically, we have five different bills ranging from $42.50 to $769.31. This motion takes a nine-tenths vote of the body. Happens to be my personal favor, but... Anything on, anything further? All right. Let's put it to a vote and open the voting. Again, this is a nine-tenths majority. The voting is now open. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. See if Mr. O'Neill is going to have to get his green eye shade out for this one. No, he won't. Motion carries 168 to 4 with one abstention. That is clearly a nine-tenths majority. All right. Mr. Connolly, I'm going to entertain a motion to dissolve Special Town Meeting Number One and return to the Annual. By Mr. Connolly, we'll have Mrs. Taylor second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say no. Motion carries. We are now back to the Annual Town Meeting. Article Number One. Ms. Grove, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam... Yep. Takes a second.
We get Ms. Grove's mic going.
All right. What about now? All right. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Board of Selectmen that the annual report of town officials of the town of Norwood be received and accepted as printed.
All right. And Mr. Connolly, you're seconding that? Folks, annual report. And it is also online and available. I recommend the online version. Very, very easy. This is a majority vote of Town Meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. Voting is now open. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. Motion carries 149 to 4 with one abstention. That brings us to Article Two, Compensating Balances. And Ms. Grove, it's the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam... Thank you, no. Thank, thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Board of Selectmen that the town hereby authorizes the Treasurer from time to time with such terms and conditions as the Treasurer or Collector may deem appropriate to enter into compensating balance agreements with banks in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
And being seconded by Mr. Connolly? Anything on the motion, Ms. Grove?
No, nothing further.
All right. This is an administrative item, for the most part. Compensating balances. Any discussion? Seeing none? Whoop. In the back.
Carolyn Barrows, District Eight. I just don't know what compensating balances means. Sorry.
Mr. O'Neill, do you want to explain it, or do we want Mr. Hagerty to explain it? Or Mr. Mizuko will explain it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is just an allowance, annually allowed or required by state law, to allow the Treasurer to be able to move our bank accounts around to make sure we can get the best rate, depending on which bank we're using. That's all.
Anything else? All right. Seeing none, we're going to put it to a vote. It's a majority vote. Let's open the voting. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. Motion carries 156 to 3 with one abstention. Ms. Bodenhoffer, that really worked out well, by the way, because you're up on Article Three, motion by the FinCom. motion by the FinCom.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the town hereby authorizes the following revolving fund spending limits for fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the purpose of funding programs administered by Council on Aging, $150,000, Norwood Public Library, $75,000, Health Department, Tobacco Enforcement and Education, $25,000, Recreation Extended Day Fund, $850,000.
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding on the motion.
FinCom recommends this. To be clear, this is not an appropriation of money, we're not asking for any money. It's more of a housekeeping item to set up the maximum that can be, you had in these revolving fund accounts. So for example, the Extended Day Fund, Extended Day charges a fee to the parents who send their children to Extended Day. They put that money in an account, and then they use that account to pay for their teachers and their supplies and all of that kind of stuff. So that's how our revolving fund account works, and so this is just, state law requires that we set a maximum limit.
Okay. Any discussion? Is that a... Nope? Yes, okay, go ahead. Mic's coming.
Madam Moderator, Brian Gunning, District Three. My question to the Finance Commission, how do they determine the maximum limit?
Ms. Bodenhofer, do you know, or do you want to defer?
I believe these are recommendations from the Director of Finance after he has looked at patterns in the accounts over the previous years and seen how much money tends to move through the accounts.
And the Director of Finance is shaking his head, yes.
As a follow-up to the Director, please, I tried to find that information, that's the only reason why I asked the question. And I couldn't find it anywhere on the town website. And I guess that brings up a larger question about just the ease of accessing the budget materials, but in understanding the budget, just from a layman's perspective, and it seems to vary from year to year, the format of the budget that were presented, the graphics, the, just everything is different the way it's presented. So I couldn't find that information, that's the only reason why I asked. The answer itself isn't important, but I think what is, is why couldn't I?
Mr. O'Neil, do you want to...
Through you, Madam Moderator. So these are revolving funds, so there are no tax dollars that go into these funds. They are all paid for by fees and, and other allocations of money from outside sources that come into this. So the town meeting is not voting on this. What town meeting is voting on is the approved expenditure limit. And as Ms. Bodenhofer said, this is an estimate based on what we look at from the Finance Department, what we think they're going to spend over the next year.
Is there a follow-up?
No, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, probably tired of hearing my name tonight. Anthony Ketchel, District Seven. Just a question, so I understand correctly, so the maximum limit, let's say, Extended Day Fund, $850,000, that's the most we can take in from fees and the most we can expend with those fees?
Yeah, through Madam Moderator, yes, that is the maximum we should be spending from those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
Ed Lynch, District Seven. So these are self-supporting, sir, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Then why do you cap on what they would spend this year?
Through Madam Moderator, this is a requirement of the state, based on how we set those up under 53, 55, 53 and a half. So it's a requirement from the state that we have to set, the town meeting body has to set the expenditure limits each year.
Thank you. Are there other revolving funds for different departments other than these four that you listed? Are there, how many others are there? Do we, is there a number? Thank you.
Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Recreation Department runs a revolving fund, it's a different type of fund. Statute allows a, sort of a permanent recreation revolving fund. That's the only other one. Other than there's some smaller ones for, technically, it's a revolving fund when we have somebody pay for peer review and we take in the money, and then we pay for the peer review with that. But none of these funds are designed to accumulate cash. The easiest way to understand them all is the Senior Center puts on a yoga program, it's 10 bucks a person, hopefully less, because it's the Senior Center, but 10 people pay $10, we take the $100 and we pay the instructor.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Anything further? Ms. Taylor?
Jane Farretta, District Eight. The Health Department, Tobacco Enforcement and Education, I think it's appropriate to ask, I guess, the $25,000, how is that allocated? In what way?
Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Moderator. This was established a few years ago when the state changed the fine for tobacco violations. A second and third fine is $5,000 and $10,000. So when the state changed that, we didn't want stores to think that we were potentially fining them or collecting an enormous fine just to fund the town's revenue. So if there is a fine, it goes into that fund, and it's spent on tobacco education and enforcement.
Okay, just the tobacco education and enforcement. What would the enforcement be?
Uh, it did, thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Moderator. Additional, it's mostly working. Additional, we do stings the same way we do with liquor licenses, where somebody will come in and see if somebody tries to sell underage tobacco. We'll do more education and more information out of that. It's just with that fine being so high by the state, even though we get it, it just felt that we don't want them to think we're balancing our budget if we had $50,000 in fines in a year. We said, whoa, 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 this is a little too much. We wanted to go right back into that enforcement and education.
Thank you, Stacy. Where are you? Thank you, Stacy Lane. That's your department? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else? All right. I think we're going to... Oh, Ms. Brody. Sorry, I didn't, didn't see you behind the mask.
Steve Brody, District Four. I think in the past, each of these groups had a letter up front, which probably would have helped everyone, so I'd recommend we go back to that in the future, that the Council on Aging, the Senior Center, and the Public Library, et cetera, provide a letter requesting and explaining their revolving funds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brody. Well, I'm sure the Director of Finance and the FinCom will take that under advisement for future budget books. Anything else? All right, seeing none, we're going to put this to a vote. It is a majority vote to authorize revolving fund spending limits for fiscal 2026. Let's open the voting. Ten seconds. Close the voting. And the motion carries 153 to three. All right, that brings us to Article Four, which is the start of the budget. I am going to call an audible, because this is a natural progression. It is late in, in the evening, and I do not think starting our annual budget at 10 of 10 is the right thing to do. We certainly wouldn't be able to finish it tonight. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn until Thursday at 6:30 sharp, right back here at the high school. Mr. Connolly, thank you, and Ms. Taylor, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll see everybody on Thursday. Please, please, please be on time. Thank you.